And because of that, just as children who know their parents genuinely love them, they trust their parents, we can trust you, knowing that it is out of love, your love for us, your perfect love for us, that you lead in our decision-making and in how we go about making those decisions. Would you bless this council tonight that you love so much? We ask for that in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you Pastor Scott. Next order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions to tonight's agenda or changes to the agenda? We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an item wherever you deem appropriate for a La Croix Links Golf Course update, please.
Okay, we'll call it 61A. Any additional items for the agenda? My lights are not working, Dave, so just a heads up. If anybody has any other... Bonnie, do you want to speak?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition noted? Motion by Doyle, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next order of business is Veteran of the Month. If the Ward 3 council members and David Eggermeyer could join me down front. Chip, with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the August 2012 Veteran of the Month recognition to David J. Eggermeyer. And now I'd like to turn the floor over to Alderman Jerry Wright, also a distinguished veteran, who will read the proclamation.
Thank you. Senior Master Sergeant David Eggermeyer served in the United States Air Force for a total of 24 years upon his retirement in 2010. Sergeant Eggermeyer's first assignment was at Loring Air Force Base Main, where he was crew chief on a B-52G. In 1990, Mr. Eggermeyer deployed as Diego Garcia in support of Operation Desert Storm, where he earned the Outstanding Unit with Valor Award. In 1993, he was stationed at Ellsworth Air Force Base and served in many capacities in the B-52 station here, to include B-52H Crew Chief, Quality Inspector, and Senior Weapons Systems Controller. With the departure of the B-52 bombers, he transferred to the B-1 program and served as a bomb expediter, Aircraft Section Chief, and Production Superintendent for the 37th Bomb Squadron. During Operation Allied Force, Mr. Eggermeyer was hand-selected to form as a squadron First Sergeant. Sergeant, Senior Master Sergeant Eggermeyer graduated from the Air Force Senior Enlisted Academy, Maxwell Air Force Base in Alabama in 2002, and served as an instructor there for a year. He was then hand-selected to perform duties as the Air Force liaison at the Navy Senior Enlisted Academy Newport, Rhode Island, where instructed senior NCOs from all the services, including numerous international students on professional military education. Until 2008, he returned to Ellsworth and served as a B-1 aircraft maintenance superintendent before deploying to Alidad Air Base Qatar to support OIF/OEF, and upon his return, Mr. Eggermeyer retired from active duty. Sergeant Eggermeyer's military decorations include Meritorious Service Medal with two oak leaf clusters, the Air Force Commendation Medal with two oak leaf clusters, the Navy and Marine Corps Commendation Medal, Air Force Achievement Medal with one oak leaf cluster, the Outstanding Unit Award with Valor and two oak leaf clusters, the Air Force Short Overseas Door Ribbon with one oak leaf cluster, the Air Force Meritorious Unit Award, Air Force Good Conduct Medal with seven oak leaf clusters, Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, Air Force Expeditionary Medal with Gold Border, Air Force Longevity Award with five oak leaf clusters, Air Force Professional Military Education Award with two oak leaf clusters, and the Air Force Organizational Excellence Award, National Defense Medal with Star, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Marksmanship Ribbon, and the Air Force Professional Military Instructor Badge. Sergeant Eggermeyer and his wife Tammy reside in Rapid City and have two school-aged children. Tammy is employed through the city Rapid City. Since retirement, Sergeant Eggermeyer has served as fellow veterans, as a county veteran service officer in both Pennington and Meade County. Currently, he is the Emergency Management Specialist for the VA Black Hills Healthcare System, working out of Fort Meade. Having served his country with pride and honor and integrity, Sergeant Eggermeyer is a true patriot of the United States, the United States Air Force, his city, and his family. He is the most deserving Veteran of the Month.
Well, I work for the VA now in Fort Meade, but I most enjoyed working as a veteran service officer for Pennington, Meade County. It was an important thing. It's a big deal to be nominated by superiors for something like a medal, but it's a far cry, bigger thing to be nominated by your peers, and so this means a lot to me. And thank you to the vets that are out there and the veteran organizations.
Tammy, you want to bring your fan up? Okay. And we do not have any employee awards tonight either, so we will move directly into the beautification committee, Yard of the Month. If the handles will come up, please. Welcome to our meeting tonight, and your yard, 1501 Summit, was the proud recipient of this month's Yard of the Month award, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Kathy to tell more about the award and your yard.
Beautification Committee gives a Yard of the Month award every year from June through October. Pat was nominated by her husband unbeknownst to her. In fact, he told her about it about a half an hour before I called to tell her that she'd won. The Handels are an amazing couple. They have allowed us to come to their garden two different times with the garden walk that Master Gardeners and Garden Club does, and they're phenomenal. They really are. Of course, they're also very well-known as the cream puff lady at the fair. So, they do a super job. On top of receiving a certificate that says that we thank them so much for the work that they do in beautifying the city, they also receive something they can put in their window, and they do receive a gift certificate for $25 from... This one is from Black Hills Nursery that was donated to us, and we appreciate all their work. Thank you.
The Ward 5 council members would come down.
Well, we want to thank you very much for this. It is an honor for this to be presented to us, and we thank Black Hills Nursery for donating so generously, and we will eagerly go up there and spend it. And we in garden circles also are so grateful that we live in a city that does such a fantastic job with the composting, and we refer to the city compost as black gold. And we have used innumerable tons in our yard to enrich our soil and enhance our growing. So, did you want to say anything?
I was going to say on the compost, I figure we're somewhere over 100 ton of compost onto our yard. Good thing it's only a penny a pound. I would just like to say thank you to the council, to the committee, and I'd like to publicly say thank you to Pat, because she does put her heart and soul into that yard.
The next order of business is an executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Seven seconds.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Chad Lewis. Joel, can you state the purpose for us?
Thank you, Mayor. It's for purposes authorized under STCL 125 Sub 3. It's for discussing proposed and pending litigation and contractual matters.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session? Motion by Doyle, second by Sasso. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is direction from council regarding contract dispute with Burns &amp; McDonald over Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking for a motion to enter into settlement negotiations with Burns &amp; McDonald per the parameters discussed in executive session.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Wright. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We do have our Citizen of the Month here. She was so busy serving our community that she's now here, so we'd like to meet her down front along with the Ward 1 council members. The August 2012 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to the community. We are pleased to present this award to Mary Jo Farrington. Mary Jo has been a Rapid City resident for many years. Currently, she is the Coordinator for Alcohol and Tobacco Education and Wellness Initiative at the School of Mines and Technology. In addition to working with college students, Mary Jo has also been strongly involved in many organizations throughout the community, including Democracy in Action, South Dakota Peace and Justice, and Women Evolving. She has attempted to better our community by dedicating her time to helping others around her regardless of their personal situation or background. She promotes health, justice, and equality by lending a hand in organizing educational events around the community. She has opened her home and heart to many individuals in Rapid City, and all this on top of working full-time as an educator at the School of Mines. The nominator Patty Martenson wrote, "Mary Jo is one of the best and most helpful persons I know, and that's why I would like to nominate her for Citizen of the Month. Her involvement shows true commitment and care for our community. Thank you, Mary Jo, for your dedication."
I get stuck with the whereases. I think the mayor's tired of them. Whereas, the City of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas, the August Citizen of the Month is awarded to Mary Jo Farrington, a resident of Ward 1 in Rapid City, and whereas, Mary Jo has been strongly involved in many organizations throughout Rapid City, including Democracy in Action, South Dakota Peace and Justice, and Women Evolving, and whereas, Mary Jo has attempted, strike, has made our community better by dedicating her time to helping others around her regardless of their personal situation or background. Now therefore, we, Alderwoman Charity Doyle and Alderman Bill Clayton of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim Mary Jo Farrington as the August 2012 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of her innovation and leadership and the many contributions she has made to our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There's so many volunteers and wonderful people in South Dakota, and it's a great place to live and work.
Thank you, Bonnie.
And we'll now recognize Alderman Chad Lewis for appointing to personal privilege. Chad?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I'm going to miss my daughter's birthday, and she's turning four today for Sophia. You're the light of my life, darling. I miss you very much, and I'm sorry Dad can't be there tonight, but you hopefully will. These nice people let me go early so I can come home and at least talk you to bed. Your life honors mine, so thank you.
Thank you, Chad. We'll now go to general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns with the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have two general public comment items. We'll first go to Cora Freed.
Hello, my name is Cora Freed, and I'm a member of Dakota Choral Union, a 150-voice, non-auditioned, mentoring community choir which enriches our Black Hills area throughout with music. My purpose today is to introduce you to DCU, a member of the Allied Arts Fund who depend upon arts subsidy to function effectively. The arts make kids and adults smarter, and the arts contribute to the economic and mental health of our community. We take the city budget dollars and stretch them by volunteering our time and expertise for all ages. This year, DCU and the Black Hills Chamber Society cosponsored our 25th annual Young Vocal Argus Competition, which provides scholarships to high school and college students. Last April, we teamed with the Rapid City Children's Concert Choir to perform Mass of the Children. Our small group choir, Cantorai, volunteers performances at adult living facilities. In June, we participated in the naturalization ceremony at Mount Rushmore. What a heartwarming experience to welcome and celebrate with those pledging new citizenship in the United States of America. Also in June, the Rapid City Municipal Band, DCU, and other community members put together inspirational music for the 1972 Flood Memorial Service. Initially, Mayor, former Mayor Dawn Barnett told the Flood Committee to think big and contact the Mormon Tabernacle Choir, but that idea was dropped when they heard that the fee was $250,000. Our volunteering cost to the city was minimal and our participation meaningful. Moving forward, I cordially invite you to join us November 11th when we honor our veterans with a concert, "America My Home." We'll be renting the facilities of Calvary Lutheran Church. As a member of the DCU Board, I know balancing a budget is challenging. We keep our budget in the black yet give several free concerts to our increasing audiences or charge minimal fees despite decreasing donations. I respectfully invite you to come see how the arts are fun, educating, innovative, expressing both joy and sorrow as a community while uplifting each other through every experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Cora, and we'll now recognize Jim Jackson under general public comment.
I'm supposed to have a picture up there. Good evening to everyone. I sent everyone an email this afternoon regarding the signs for a permit. I should have. I think he was going to press, or do I just press it? There we go. Okay. This is the location of that sign that I've been emailing you about that we've been having such, oh God, time trying to get a permit for. This ain't the sign. This is the contractor's sign that's on the property. The sign itself is this one here. This sign, if I was to go like this, about a foot on each side of me is how wide this sign is. The sign is no taller than I am. All right, so a 4x8 sign is like a paneling that you put in your house on your wall. It's like you use for your political signs. Now, I don't know about you guys, but when you start to put up your political signs and they start telling you that you need to better get some engineering for that, and you need to have the property lines laid out exactly before you putting up your political signs, I think you might want to consider that. I think it's just been crazy, as far as I'm concerned, that we're going over a sign. These are drawings that we do at our company. We've been in business since 1928. I have never had a sign fall down in the 40 years that I've been in this business. Our company is very reputable. I understand today I put in a permit that this was going to be fine. I understand it possibly. I don't know what engineering is supposed to mean. This is a, you know, that tells you everything you need to know about that sign. If you want to use it for your political signs, feel free. I'll give you a copy. I don't know how many of you read my email today. I'm just going to read it to you, just in case. And first off, before I say go any more further, Brad and the building people, they're awesome. They're great guys. They're doing a fantastic job. They're doing exactly what they've been hired to do, and I appreciate them. I got the utmost respect for those guys up there. But what I wrote today is, "I ran into another matter today as I tried again to submit the same permit. We are now required to provide a plot plan that shows the property lines. No problem, I thought." I was told this was not a problem without, since the city of Rapid City has Rapid Map and has these options on it, and which is we've been using for years, mind you. I was told that these were not acceptable. We needed a plot plan. I asked what if a business or school or anyone installing a sign does not have these? I was told they would need to have it surveyed. The cost to survey for a small sign does not make sense. I have asked the city if they had these maps, and they have them. I was told they have them, and I thought, well, problem solved. You know, you got these maps, we can use them. I asked if I could get a copy. Nope. There's a copyright it, so they cannot be used. Could we use them without copying them so that I could show them where we're putting the sign, and they can see where the property line is, so we can communicate and make sure we're all on the same page? Nope. Can't do that either. I went down to the school to get, you think the school would have the plot plans for all the schools? Well, guess what? They don't have them. We spent over an hour looking down on the first floor for those. I was finally told to call Renter Associates, which I did. Renter Associates has already done all the drawings, all the scales, all the property lines and everything. Everything's there. It's ready. You know, imagine if you're going to put up your political sign, now you got to get this, all these surveys done first, too. He told me there that he just had a little bit to do and he'd have them ready for me, and it would only cost minimum of four hours at 80 bucks an hour. So, do the math, 320 bucks. I'm not against us doing engineering or doing the plot plans for big signs. It makes sense. It's good, common sense. But when you're talking these small signs, 4x8, there's no logic there. I guess I don't know what else to say. I appreciate all of those comments I have gotten from the council and stuff, so I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We do not have We do not have any more general public comment items. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, then we'll move on to public comment for items six through 49. We'll open the public comment period. Motion by Doyle, second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Public comment period is now open for items six through 49. We do not have any speaker request forms from those items. Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close public comment for those items?
Second.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comment is now closed on six through 49. Any council member would like to remove an item for separate consideration, please hit your light. We'll first go to Steve Lorenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull 48, please.
Okay. And we'll also pull 29, 29, per staff request. So 29 and 48, any other items? Any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent with the exception of 29 and 48? Motion by Peterson, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on item 29. Amanda, can you read this into the record for us?
Approve event permit for the Americana Music Festival to be held on September 22nd, 2012, and I yield the floor.
And we'll go to Joel Landine, our city attorney. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason we asked to have this pulled off the agenda and separately considered is that in discussing it, there was some confusion today, and we wanted to be very clear with the council on what you're actually approving. The Doll has an on-sale license. They are asking to close off part of the right-of-way in which they're going to have a concert. They want to serve alcohol at this event, and they show on their site plan a fenced-off area. Their license allows them to serve on their premises, so the actual selling of the alcoholic beverages will occur on the Doll property. However, their intention is to allow people to drink in the crowd as they watch the concert. So what you're really approving when you approve this event permit is that you're suspending the open container within that area of their event for the period of their event so that people can purchase their alcoholic beverages on the property of the Doll and then consume them in the public right-of-way, which is something that, under the ordinance and state law, you have the power to do. So we just wanted to be clear, you're not, and also clear with other applicants, because if they were actually serving alcohol in the public right-of-way, like Summer Nights or some of the others, then they would be required, even though they have a license, to obtain a special event license which covered that area. But since the sales will not actually be occurring, all you need to do is suspend the open container during the period of the event.
We have a motion to approve? We do have, do we have a motion? Charlene, do we have a motion?
No.
I think if you approve the event permit, it wasn't completely clear based on some of what they put, but with the understanding that what I've described, that by approving the event permit, you're allowing them to, you're agreeing to suspend the open container in that area per their request and per their plan that they've outlined, I think that would be sufficient. So if you just make a motion to approve the event.
Okay. Motion by Wright, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 48. Amanda?
Approve Resolution Number 2012-099, resolution of intent to take the statutory authorized increase in property tax revenue as part of the annual appropriation ordinance for 2013, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Wright. Any discussion? No discussion? Steve Lorenti.
Let me take a deep breath. No kidding. But all seriousness, it's extremely important, and I wanted to speak about this because this is extremely important to the taxpayers of Rapid City and to all of us up here as well. None of us take this lightly. And I want to start by saying that one of the comments that has been made repetitively about taking this tax increase has been that because our buying power has decreased tremendously over the years and we have not taken this increase to offset that buying power. And so I want to give a little bit of statistics on that, because I think the data is important. The emotion is one thing, but the data, in my opinion, is what's most important. And the fact of the matter is, according to the Department of Labor Statistics, their website, and I invite all citizens to go out there, they have a calculator on buying power. A dollar in 1985, today, to buy that same thing, that dollar that you spent in 1985, you would need to spend $2.13, okay? So that's the inflation, CPI inflation by the Department of Labor Statistics website. So based on that buying power, we have decreased our buying power by 113%. It sounds significant, doesn't it? And it is significant. But the reality is, this city, since 1985 during that same time period, has increased its dollars of the property tax levy by 253%. Those dollars that we have taken has increased by 253%. That was provided to us by our finance officer. Those numbers are out there, and that is the truth. The truth of the matter is, the taxpayers have been funding this city at a rate that has far exceeded the decrease in buying power. So you may hear tonight some comments after I'm done that our buying power is, the decrease in our buying power is the reason that we need to take this CPI. That may be one of the arguments. But I think I've set the record straight. So remember these comments when you hear them, because that will most likely be one, but maybe not now. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the attempt, or I should say, the lack of effort by this council, and I am part of it. And so it's hard, it's very frustrating for me that we did not look, even during the budget hearings, we did not look into the budget and the taxpayers' dollars that they are, that the taxpayers are giving us today. We didn't look at that 2013 budget to see how we could fund these new police officers that we absolutely need, critically need. And unfortunately, there's a majority of this council that found it, the easiest path was to just take a CPI increase, the tax increase, put it on the taxpayers. Because I do not want to take the time to debate the issues about this 2013 budget and find the savings that is necessary to fund these much-needed police officers. And I must tell you, it is extremely frustrating to not even have that conversation. Whether the people who wanted to find that savings won in the end or not, the taxpayers have lost, because we haven't had that conversation. And that's what the budget hearings are for, ladies and gentlemen. And so it's an injustice to the taxpayers that we have not had that conversation, and there was a majority that voted to close the conversation about finding other ways to fund the much-needed police officers that we needed. And I yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to beg to differ with Mr., my distinguished colleague to my right, in that I did listen to the people, I did study the dollars and so forth, and the CPI is part of the budget issue.
Jerry, I don't think your mic is on.
It is on. Okay? How's that? I did sit in on every single but one, I think, Citizens Advisory Committee meeting for the budget. I sat in several of the budget meetings, I missed a few of them. I have studied the budget from page one to page, I think it's 40 or 80, I can't remember, looking for things that we could do differently. But the CPI is different than funding anything new or finding fault or weaknesses, and I assume that staff and the mayor did that. But my support of the CPI of 3% is based upon the increasing cost of materials, supply, and labor, the cost to city and its performance, of its purpose of protecting the public's health, welfare, and safety. In a cursory review of facts of city expenditure, fuel costs in the last year have gone up approximately 2%. Sand, which we use in our de-icing and sanding for the winter, has gone up approximately 5%. Salt has gone up 2.6%. I also went into the engineering news record, I've got copies of it, and the construction cost is at 2.9% an annual inflation rate. In addition to the material costs, the cost of labor in the proposed 2013 budget was increased by 5.2%. In addition, we have seen a dependency grow on financing needed equipment in our department funded by property taxes because there's not been the cash available to purchase. All of these expenses supporting operations for the public health, welfare, and safety are reasonable and expected. However, by not taking the CPI increase for the terminal fund budgets, which pays for the salt, the sand, the fuel, and so forth, we will need to take money away from other sources of income badly needed to fund our shortages in infrastructure, maintenance, repair, and replacement. I thoroughly understand and appreciate those on fixed income, and any increase of expenses can be a hardship. But I do know we also have a property tax system. We have a mechanism to assist the elderly through an existing tax rebate or hold program. I would appreciate the support of my fellow council members on the CPI, as I think it's good, responsible government. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
I'd like to offer a substitute motion to take 50% of the CPI.
We have a substitute motion? Do we have a second?
For discussion purposes, sure.
Okay, we have a motion by Sasso and a second by Wright, and you have the floor, Ron.
Thank you. Though, I am not in favor of taking the CPI, given our situation, what we're looking at right now, we do have unencumbered cash. We have not explored looking at any cuts to subsidies, and I should point out that there's some confusion when we look at and discuss cuts to subsidies that we're not talking about eliminating. I think it's more a question of whether or not we're providing 35% or 30% as far as the percentages of their overall budget. That being said, 50% of the CPI basically would be providing over $200,000, $201,003, which would almost offset completely the addition of the police officers, which, given the budget that was presented by the mayor, which was a balanced budget, as a council, we looked and said, okay, let's look at adding four police officers, and I believe this would be a reasonable, a very reasonable compromise in looking at taking only 50% of the CPI. I know, I know, there, I know there are, there's a group of you who don't want to touch the CPI at all, as well as there's some of you who absolutely want to take all of it. This is something where I think this is our, the best chance at compromise. And given the change we had in the budget for four police officers, that this would actually provide that, that funding. So, thank you.
And we'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As an engineer, one thing I've had a lot of is math classes. And we're talking about setting the record straight. I've been working on some numbers here. And I can see where this 253% increase has come from, and it's based on a calculation comparing $1985 to $2,012 without using a conversion factor. When you use the correct conversion factor and get apples and oranges to look like apples and apples, it's actually 65%. So in the last 28 to 30 years or so, we have increased our taxes by 65%. Meanwhile, the land, the square miles of land within Rapid City that we're responsible for maintaining has increased 95%. Miles of sewer line has increased 42%. Miles of water line, 70%. And I really wanted to wrap my mind around this. I remember Alderman Roberts saying that the mill levy right now is the lowest it's been in probably ever. Back in 1985, the mill levy was $8.71 per thousand. Right now, it's $3.15. I mean, I guarantee if we went back up to that 8.71, we'd sure get some things taken care of around here. But that isn't the point. We want to experience the rewards of the growth that we're experiencing and somehow balance that out. And, you know, it's basic economics. Part of that balanced budget is being able to maintain where you're at the year prior and then reap the rewards of that growth. Take the growth for genuine growth. Right now, what we're doing, and I don't begrudge the mayor, he did present a balanced budget, and we have very different philosophies on how to make that happen, but when you don't maintain or take the CPI to maintain, then your growth is absorbing that inflation. So you don't really get to reap the rewards of that growth. And we wonder why, you know, we keep taking one step forward and two steps back in Rapid City. And I don't want to continue that route. We have a lot of makeup to do over the last four or five years of a zero-growth budget. That meant a lot of cuts, even though it wasn't pitched as cuts, believe you me, there were cuts. So I just, you know, talking about setting the record straight, Aaron, if you're interested in any of these numbers, I'd be glad to provide them for you. Meanwhile, we've had a 48% growth in population just within the city limits, and remember, we're a hub for about approximately a quarter of a million people. Do you not think that the wear and tear on our infrastructure, the demands on our infrastructure definitely are felt because of being a central hub? So, you know, I'm really not trying to belittle or berate, I just think we just need to be straightforward and look at things from a factual matter, and comparing apples to apples is always going to just help clear the air. And again, if anyone's willing or needing those numbers, I'd be glad to share them. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. While I appreciate the efforts to do a compromise, I think Charity kind of hit something that of note. I like to teach dance class, and one of the things she talked about is two steps back and one step forward, so that's the kind of dance that I don't want to go to. So, while I appreciate the compromise, I think I have some concerns in that. And then for me, I am also on a fixed income. I retired last year, a year and a half ago, so as far as getting any extra income coming into my household, it's not going to happen. But really, what it boils down to for me, and I probably don't even hit the average on this, is a dollar and a dime a month. A dollar and a dime is what we're fighting over. Two-thirds of the people that come into Rapid City spend, spend for every, for every person that's coming in and spending money here, and we collect a sales tax. So two out of three people that come into Rapid City or spending money in Rapid City is where we get our sales tax from. Two out of three people is where we get our sales tax from, from outside the city limits. So for me, what it amounts to is a dollar and a dime is what we're fighting over, per month. Thank you, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. I would just say or add to the conversation that we have a lot, a lot of things that are unfunded. Just Friday, we found out that the police safety officers, that in certain parts of the town, their mic only works 77% of the time. So they need a radio tower to try to bring that up closer to 100%. So you think about these safety officers going into different areas where their mic doesn't work 23% of the time. And I don't think that's good for our citizens, and I don't think it's good for our employees. Now, there's the CIP fund that we could take the money out of, but it's woefully underfunded. So it's not that we're wanting extra money so we can all get new pairs of shoes or give us council people a raise or anything. These are really legitimate concerns. Also, I just want to- Also, I just want to say that I don't know if Mr. Laurenti and I were at the same meeting for budget hearings, because at that point, I did offer to take this funding from the mayor's office and council contingency. That was an offer I made. His counteroffer was to take it out of the arts and health and welfare. Well, I believe that arts and health and welfare save us money in the long run because you have people that will find a productive path in their life through those channels. They will save on police and fire and detox. And then they also save the state a lot of money, even though we, you know, in theory don't have to worry about saving the state money. It still, you know, it all helps out. So I would be glad to meet again if we come up with some other methods of cutting, if we want to cut somewhere else besides health and welfare and the arts. Because those groups have not had any kind of raise in years. So essentially, they get cuts every year because they're not getting a raise. In fact, a lot of them could really use a lot more money. So I will be glad to set up another meeting if you can come up with something more creative or even to offer something else. So anyway, I appreciate Mr. Sasso offering a compromise. And I think, even though I don't think we should do the compromise, I will vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And we'll go to John Roberts. John?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I really don't know what to say. No, I'm just kidding.
We'll go to Chad Lewis.
You might want to. I'm just kidding. One thing that worries me about this whole discussion is the fact that it's really not coming up right at this point of how many tax increment financing districts we paid off or were about to pay off. One thing that worries me is we spend so much time and effort and money to set these up to grow Rapid so we can have more money coming into our tax base. But when we have the opportunity, because we've paid off a tremendous amount of them or we are in the middle of it in the near future, when we have the opportunity to take that money, we still want to take a tax raise. These tips are generating more money than the CPI. So in my opinion, and I just got to say it, in my opinion, what we're doing is we're big government, taking money because we can. And I think that we just need to think about this, think about what we're working for in Rapid, and think about how to use our money a little more efficiently. I think that's one of the reasons we set up the compass committee last year. I hope it is, so we can look at some of these inefficiencies, find more money, find ways that we don't always have to put more burden on the taxpayer. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? We do have a substitute motion on the floor to take half of the CPI. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion maker?
Mr. Mayor, can I raise a point of order?
You can't if somebody asks you a question.
Stan, I have a question for you. You have something you want to bring up? How's that? That works.
I'm sort of confused about the procedure because public comment on the consent items was before, we thought there'd be consent. When does the public, when is there going to be public comment on this particular issue, if at all?
The public comment was at the beginning of item six. But if you'd like to speak-
But we didn't know anything was coming off of consent. So this, I guess, from my experience legislatively, when it comes off of consent, it's no longer part of the consent calendar. Or is it? Your items on consent, I thought we would talk to if we had something, but there were going to be consent. There was no point.
Yeah, I understand your question, Sander. If you want to go ahead and make your comments. Go ahead.
Now, that ends up confusing me. Because I've just heard an expression that this adjustment to the cost of living would, could be offset by what was unfortunately referred to as subsidies. Is this the appropriate time to do that? Or is appropriate time when you get to 54 on the regular calendar?
54.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is a substitute motion that is to take half of the property tax CPI for 2013. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Doyle? Lewis? Roberts? Wright? Laurenti? Sasso? Nordstrom? Scott? Clayton? Peterson? It's a tie vote, five to five.
Chair votes no. Okay, we're now back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to take the entire CPI for 2013 for property tax. Any discussion? Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't speak in the last motion because I figured hopefully we would go forward with it and wouldn't have to deal with this much more. But a quick question for, I'm not sure, I just direct this towards finance probably. When's our negotiations with the police and the fire start for the next legislative process? Is it coming back up, though?
Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been in discussions. We've been contacted specifically by the police union. What I've indicated to them is that we would like to get something going here by September and start negotiations. I have not been in direct contact with the other unions yet. I have been talking with Tamara Pierre, who's talking about assisting us, based on conversations I've had with the mayor. And that seemed to work well in our negotiations with the fire union that were recently resolved. So I would imagine in the next couple of weeks, we will start our negotiations for 2014. Discussion we've had up to this point is that it would probably be a good idea to have the negotiations concluded or at least have a very good idea where we're going to be at before the budget for 2014 is prepared early next year.
Thank you very much. Okay. You know, folks, I'm in a dream position right now. Every Joe taxpayer just wants to say enough's enough, Mr. Government. I don't want you to pay any more taxes. And I, you know, I love to sit there and just say no. And because the last thing I want is more bureaucracy, more government regulation. Believe me, the last thing I want is more government regulation in my life. But I've got to think about this in the greater good sense. CPI, as I understand it, has been stated legal in finance. It's been stated several times, is generally an automatic item taken by every other municipality around. We've just made it an issue here where for good or better or worse, we vote on it every time. And that's, you know, that's fine. I have no problem standing up and saying what I think is right. However, we've got issues here as a city we need to take care of that have been neglected, for lack of a better word. We have a police department that's not paid commensurate with the rest of the cities our size and the rest of the nation. The last thing I want to do is turn this place into a puppy mill where we don't pay our officers enough and they go off and find a job in a better city or for more pay. I think they're doing a great job with what they've got, what they've got to deal with right now. And going forward, we have to negotiate with them. And I think it's, you know, we're going to have to be able to retain them. Because when we lose them, it costs us a lot of money, folks. I think the number is somewhere around $100,000 to train, hire, and train a new officer. If I'm correct of that, I think that's a number I heard discussed from Dr. Tally a few years ago. Same with the fire department. You know, we have, they're asking these gentlemen and women, a very difficult job, a very dangerous job, and it's a very necessary job. And I think that we need to make sure we stand behind them. Now, we're talking about raising property taxes. Okay, there's no denying that. But what are we really getting for that money? Most people I talk to have no problem paying extra taxes if that money's being spent towards something that's for the greater good and they can actually see a tangible benefit for it. To me, if you see more cops in the street, less crime, your house is, someone come and answers your, you get hurt, ambulance shows up, that's a pretty tangible benefit to me. I, you know, we've neglected other things in this city. Now we have to come up with ways to pay them. The drainage utility comes to mind. The mayor and public works have come up with this new drainage utility. We need to address the drainage issue that's been neglected for years, and we're going to have to raise taxes to do that. Is that the right thing to do? It seems to be, but we're playing catch-up. Do we want to play catch-up with this? We don't take the CPI, folks. We're losing $400,000 that's not coming back to us ever again. Now, that's for the greater good of the community. It's not like I'm asking you to each region in your wallet, write me a check for $400,000. Okay? The average price of taxes in this house, a $200,000 house, is roughly $3,000, give or take. So you're looking at $18 extra on that bill. To me, that just seems like a pretty good usage of your money. I'm not looking to drain anybody's wallet. I'm looking to try to make my community a better place. It's why I ran for this office. I, like I said, I'm the last guy that wants more government regulation telling me what to do. But I just certainly want to dial 911 and know there's going to be someone showing up. And I don't want to make the police or the fire the political football here because I don't think they should be. But it is a fact that we do need to support those people and make sure that when negotiations come around again next year, that they're supported. And we need to step up with that. And that's a duty we owe to them, and we owe to ourselves and our children and our families. So when I say this, I don't take it lightly. I don't want to raise taxes. I don't want to hit you, you know, in the wallet where it's going to hurt really bad. I don't think it is. I just want to make sure that I'm doing what I think's the responsible adult thing to do. And I'm not saying anybody else is childish by saying that, okay? I respect the opinions that are up here, and I very much, believe me, I was waffling like a couple politicians out there on this all weekend long, didn't sleep at all thinking about this. I was back and forth about it 100 times. But ultimately, I've decided that it's time to step up and do what I think's the responsible thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
In my opinion, what we're dealing with here is inflation. And I had a class in grad school on public finance, and the prof said we've had inflation of 3 percent since the time of Caesar. We still have it. My facts show that. And if we don't adjust our rates to cover the inflationary costs, ultimately, we have to catch up. If we take the political buy of saying, I'm not going to raise your property taxes so I, Jerry Wright, can be elected next year, I'm taking the easy way. If I say I'm going to raise your property taxes 3 percent so I can keep you and your government solvent and not hit you in two or three years with a 6 or 8 percent, a shock, I'm being honest, but I think true. I think that's the issue that's at this point. Not only are we talking about negotiating wages, not only with police and fire, but also negotiating the price of salt, sand, concrete, rock, tires, fuel, you name it. I think it's very irresponsible to not make that adjustment. I was willing to make the 1.5 percent, but now that's gone out the window. I'm back on 3 percent, and I'll stand my ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, well, a couple of things I'd like to clear up. I guess I just like housekeeping items. When we say CPI of 3 percent, it is not a 3 percent property tax increase by any means. It's only 3 percent on the city's portion of your property tax bill. So 3 percent on your 18 percent. So that's where we find these numbers. If you've tried to do the math on that and say, well, that doesn't really shake out, that's the reason why. And I'd like to address, we keep talking about all this extra revenue we're supposed to have next year due to dissolved or, you know, fulfilled tax increment districts. Even so far as talking into that surplus or that extra money would go into trying to adjust the wages and get the union wages up to par. I've been working with the county today, looking at a lot of data. And it turns out, and we can always double-check, but it turns out that half of the tiffs that we've been talking about or counting on for next year, the growth from those, they have been retired, and the growth from those have already been figured into the growth for this budget. So in other words, that, the benefit of that, the money has been reallocated in this budget. So that's off the table. When you look at what's left, not necessarily for 2013, but experience or reap the benefits of that would be, 2014 would be the first year, we're looking at about $350,000. And that may sound like a lot of money to an individual, but to give our city employees a one-step increase, that's about $800,000. So again, there's a major discrepancy there. We do have a lot of catch-up to do in a lot of areas. And I don't know that, I always think it's worth taking a deeper look, a second look, a third look at these things because they are complicated issues. And we have a lot of numbers flying around, and it's easy to go and look at the numbers that support what you want to, you know, proffer to the people, if you will. But there is more, and I think it warrants another look, warrants more digging. And to me, something's just not shaking out. So again, I think we need to look at everything that's been presented and, like Alderman Lewis said, do what's responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Just calling the question.
Any objections to calling the question? Any objections to calling the question? Question has been called. We're going to proceed to the vote. And the vote, the, not objecting. So the motion is to approve taking the entire CPI for 2013 for property tax. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Lewis?
Aye.
Roberts? Wright? Laurenti? Sasso? Nordstrom? Scott? Clayton? Peterson? Doyle? Six to four. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to non-consent items, items 50 through 61. Do we have a motion to open public comment? Motion by Doyle, second by Clayton. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Public comment is now open. And we do have several speaker request forms on item 54. And we'll start first with Patrick O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary? And thank you, by the way, Patrick, for your assistance on the Citizens Committee.
No, you're welcome. Thank you. My name is Patrick O'Leary. I'm the board president of the Allied Arts Fund here in Rapid City. I just wanted to do a response to a statement that was made. I sent you all an email today, if you didn't get it, and give you 10 reasons why the arts are necessary in the city of Rapid City. Number 10, it's true prosperity. The arts are fundamental to our humanity. They ennoble and inspire us, fostering creativity, goodness, and beauty. Nine, they build stronger communities. University of Pennsylvania researchers demonstrated that a high concentration of the arts in a city leads to higher civic engagement, more social cohesion, and higher child welfare and lower property rates or poverty rates. Number eight, health and well-being. Nearly one-half of the nation's healthcare institutions provide arts programming for patients, families, and even their staff. Number seven, 21st century workforce. Reports by the conference board show creativity is among the top applied skills sought by employers. 72 percent of the businesses say that creativity is of high importance when hiring. The arts, music, creative writing, drawing, dance, provide skills sought by employers of the third millennium. Number six, improved academic performance. Longitudinal data of 25,000 students demonstrated that students with an education rich in arts have higher GPAs and standardized test scores. Number five, arts in the schools better SAT scores. Students with four years of arts or music in high school average 100 points better on their SAT scores than students with one-half year or less. Four, creative industries. The creative industries are arts businesses that range from nonprofit museums, symphonies, and theaters to for-profit film, architecture, and advertising companies. An analysis by Dunn and Bradstreet Data counts 904,000 businesses in the United States involved in the creation and involved in the creation and distribution of the arts that employ 3.3 million people, representing 4.25% of all businesses and 2.15% of all employees, respectfully. Number three, arts are the cornerstone of tourism. Arts travelers are ideal tourists. They stay longer, they spend more. The U.S. Department of Commerce reports that the percentage of international travelers, including museums, including museum visits on their trips, has grown annually since 2003, from 17% to 24%. While the share attending concerts and theater performances has increased five of the last seven years, from 13% to 17% since 2003. Arts are good for local merchants. The typical arts attendee spends $24.16 per person, per event, not including the cost of admission on an item such as meals, parking, and babysitters. Non-local arts attend audiences who live outside of the county spend nearly twice as much as local arts attendees, $39.96 versus $17.42. Valuable revenue for local businesses and the community. The number-one reason, while the arts are important, the arts are an industry. Arts organizations are responsible businesses, employers, and consumers. They spend money locally, generate government revenue, and are a cornerstone to tourism and economic development.
Patrick?
Allied Arts Funds, oh, sorry.
If you could wrap up your comments.
Yep, I'm right at the last sentence. Allied Arts-supported nonprofit arts organizations generated $13.5 million in economic activity in 2011, supporting 420 jobs and generated nearly $680,000 in city government tax revenue. Investments in the arts supports jobs, generates tax revenues, and advances our creativity-based economy. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Marian Grody. And this is also on item 54.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Arts Council. I'd like to speak to you and Rapid City Arts Council and the DALL. And we appreciate your investment in the DALL building, and I'd rather look at it as an investment than a subsidy. You have a building that you give us a budget for, which we maintain. And the equity that we put in to maintain the building is quite interesting because we have individuals there that not only use the money for maintenance of that building, but also for beautification. I don't know if any of you have been down to the arts, but during the summer, groups of us were out there planting flowers and making the building look beautiful. In addition to that, I want to tell you what your return on investment is. For every dollar that you give us, it generates for us about $2.50. That's a 250% investment, return on investment for your dollar. The other thing that I want to tell you is, we do many programs there, one of which is the Emerging Artist Program. It's a new program that was started in January, where we have individuals come on the first Friday of the month. We have an open-mic night. Over 50 people have come and have a venue in which they can display their talents. We've also had an art, a talent scout there who has picked up some of these people, and we're trying to work in the community so that they get jobs in the community, so they can play and have their music. So as a subsidy, you can call it a subsidy. I call it investment. We invest about two and a half times what you invest in, in our building there. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Stan Adelstein. Senator Adelstein? And this is also on item 54.
Tell me, please, when the light goes on, when does it change? How many minutes do I have?
It changes after two and a half minutes. So you have 30 seconds once the yellow light starts flashing.
Okay. Two and a half, I can do that.
You have three minutes total, Stan.
I heard someone discussing a moment ago the possibility of reducing subsidies. When we talk about the arts, there are no subsidies. There is an investment, an investment in making our community grow. The history that we just heard a few moments ago about the reduced actual per hundred-thousand dollars of property mill levy for the city is a result of our growth. We still are a city that is on its way. Look, I wish I had the time. I've got this group of spirits behind me because I'm obviously the oldest person in the room by a long way. The spirits of Barbara Gunderson and Bill Porter, who helped us when we built the new library that we didn't need. And not only that, but we killed downtown because we were taking the only parking down there. Art La Croix, Laurie Lidle, Tom Hennings, when we built the new civic center that would be used five times a year for the stock show. When I was chairman, we were using it five times a day, five times a day. We certainly didn't need a theater. That was something that was a political deal for Adelstein because he was a friend of Mayor La Croix's. Before we opened with, well, actually, I was chairman, so we sold 1,100 tickets for 999 seats, but it worked out. We have the Minneapolis Symphony. Mayor Ed McLaughlin talked to me about recovering that black hole, which is only beginning the Pennies Building and the Haynes Building. And what happened is, we were designing it, someone suggested an elevator as an investment. Who's been invested in an elevator with downtown for only a two-story building? Well, we did it. These investments are continuing. If we want our city to continue to prosper and grow, when I visit with people that are looking at even building a new gold mine in Keystone, when I deal with anyone who's coming into our city to invest, when we hear about, we're 10th on the list of cities in the whole United States for retirement. One of the key points there is what is available for quality of life, entertainment, education. Our DALL Fine Arts Center, I look at the spirits back there of Art DALL, the Journey Museum, Joe Rovir is standing back here behind me. Those spirits are what made this town what this council could continue to make it to be. I don't want to dwell on the spirits of councils past. I think that was in a Christmas, but anyway, those councils past are begging you not, please don't, absolutely you cannot ignore what we have done and dash to the dust what is happening in this community. Those that would eliminate those kind of investments will not any longer have the right to stay in office and will no longer be able to enjoy the growth that we should and we will have. Take the increased tax that you have and double. Please, double the amount of money that you give to the symphony, that you give to the DALL Fine Arts Center and the Journey, and it will come back to us fourfold.
Thank you, Senator. We'll now go to Karen Gunderson Olsen. Karen?
Good evening, Karen Gunderson Olsen. I won't attempt to follow Mr. Adelstein's speech, but I will remind you of this. In addition to all the fabulous things he's talked about, don't forget that these 11 organizations, plus another dozen, all do special things for kids in our community. And I think we get it right when we say, "Let's pay ahead because what we do for kids, to keep them busy, to make them smarter, to help them do better in school," these are what these organizations are doing. And that's an investment that we can pay now or we can pay them later when they're in juvenile correction.
Thank you, Karen. And last speaker on item 54 is Tony Martin. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. After I read the account of last week's council meeting, I was angry. I really was angry. I thought, "You people, some of you must be so very busy that you don't have time to do your homework, so I did it for you." Okay? One of the gentlemen said that he thought it was criminal, criminal, he said it twice, that the Journey Museum was not out promoting itself. Well, let me tell you that I am one of 200 people, volunteers, we're volunteers. We don't get paid. Do you know when I travel, what I put in my suitcase? I put a Journey Museum folder, not Waldrug, Journey Museum and whatever, and I leave it in Russia, or I leave it in Australia, or wherever I go. So, sir, we are, in fact, out promoting. I am a guide. Let me tell you, let me tell you what we did this summer, so far. This is only August. We have had 6,330 people, nine nationalities, from the United States to South Africa, Europe, sir, Mr. Roberts, and the Orient. 180 travel coaches have parked in front of the Journey Museum. You should hear what these people say. I'm a guide, and I really unload on them about the Black Hills because I love the Black Hills. But then I say, "Okay, now, tell me about your Atlanta." I give them five minutes, okay? And we're on our way through the Journey Museum. So that's what we're doing. We had 4,200 schoolchildren go through, buses from three states, go through with their teachers and our guides this school year. That's what we're doing to promote our museum. The Journey Museum was awarded $492,000 by NASA for space science outreach. Since 2010, a Journey staffer has traveled to 85 schools in Rapid City and western South Dakota to educate 14,000 schoolchildren about our school, our solar system. The Bush Foundation awarded the Journey Museum $390,000 grant for education programs of the Journey's choice. One Rapid City gentleman gave the Journey $25,000 to purchase the digital universe software. I don't really understand it, but because he believed that that was not an expenditure but an investment in education at the Journey Museum, that's what we're about. Okay, now, about the DALL Arts Center. During three weeks every spring, 1,100, excuse me, to 1,230 graders, third graders from Rapid City to Piedmont to Douglas School District are bussed for guided tours by volunteers of special exhibits. And this was triggered because 25 years ago, the school board here, in their indiscretion, decided not to fund the arts in the lower grades. This was a chance for the DALL Arts Center to step in and take up the slack for arts education for the students. The administration of the DALL, together with we volunteers, put this program in place with the school districts. That's education of our young people in their most formative years. So that's what we're doing, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay. We'll now go to item number 58, and we'll start with Rick Bentley. Mr. Bentley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rick Bentley, Bentley Miller. We own the Arby's franchise here in Rapid City. We've enjoyed doing business here for the last 22 years. It's been a great, positive environment to work in. We currently have five locations. We just opened the last location 1st of July, and we are looking at starting another one on West Main, sometime next month in September. At the location on Fifth and Catron, we had the opportunity to purchase 15 acres directly east of the new Walmart between Stumer and Catron. The experiences that we've had in the last three stores that we have built in this town have been very, very positive experiences with the Development and Planning Department of Rapid City. Great staff. As you well know, we are requesting that a right-hand turn from one of our curb cuts that is halfway between Stumer and Catron for a right-hand turn only out of that property. We feel that the value of that property and the development of that specific parcel to be of a good use for future owners is imperative that we have the right-hand turn out. I would appreciate your allowing the request for the right-hand turn out. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you, Rick. And we'll go to Janelle Fink from Fisk Land Surveying, also on item 58.
Good evening, Mayor Quay, Karen, members of the council. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and I am here with Mr. Bentley. And I'm here to speak to you on item number 58. I will try very hard to keep within my three minutes, but it's a little difficult. We've had the benefit of discussing this at Public Works a couple of different times. I am going to zoom out a little bit here. Okay. For those of you who were at Public Works committee meeting, I apologize for what I will recover here, but those of you who weren't, I think it's helpful to have a little bit of background. This illustration shows you the area that we're talking about. This is the 15-acre parcel. The arrow shows the location of the existing approach. It's located on Fifth Street between Stumer Road and Catron Boulevard. This is an aerial photo that shows, again, the same location. It's highlighting a couple of features here. Want to point out to you that the intersection at Stumer Road is signalized, as well as the intersection here at Catron Boulevard is signalized. And one of the important features is that there is a raised curb median between these two intersections, which is a very important safety feature. For any of you that had the opportunity to look at the letter that I sent you today, I quoted a couple of different passages where the Ashto manual talks about how beneficial it is to have that raised median in place. I'll show you, this is the existing, I guess, proposed master plan. The Arby's came along and developed first, and that building is already up. This shows a basic master plan for the balanced use of this property. Originally, when we came forward, the idea was to possibly have a street connection at that location, but when we submitted that optioner plan, we were told by staff that they didn't support that because it would be too much traffic. So we actually took a step back and we reconfigured what we would do in this area here. This approach now would serve this particular property here with circulation also out to Bentley Lane and Shelby that would take you up to Stumer Road. And so it's not designed as a through roadway. I did also want to point out that there are several other approaches further north on Fifth Street that are not regulated. They're open, they don't have a raised median in between them, so you actually have the ability to circulate on these areas here. You have right turns and left turns going on in that area. And when you look at the density of the approaches in this location versus the only approach here, and those arrows represent the only approaches that are in existence on this segment from, excuse me, from Enchanted Pines Drive all the way down to Catron Boulevard. So there's actually pretty limited areas there. I also wanted to make mention or point out, we kind of highlighted the fact that the raised median was a safety feature. This is the chart that comes from the Ashto manual that shows that that has the lowest crash rates for intersections, or, excuse me, for median types. So we feel that's an added safety feature. And I'd like to close by pointing out that one of the, that I'm happy to announce, that the interested party for this location is a 24-hour urgent care facility, which we think is a wonderful addition to this area and that particular part of the community at that specific lot, providing 24-hour urgent care, not only for people that travel through our community, but servicing the people in the south portion of our city. They are also discussing or proposing having a 24-hour pharmacy, which is something that is not available in this area. You have to drive all the way over to Walgreens on Mountain View. You have to drive all the way over to Walgreens on Mountain View Road if you need to fill a prescription after hours. And we think that the limited traffic that's proposed by the urgent care clinic is a good use in this area, and we sincerely hope that you will support our request for exception to allow us to use this as a right turnout in addition to the right turn in. I have, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have during the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you now have any further speaker request forms on items 50 to 61? Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item 50. Amanda?
First reading ordinance 5857, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from no-use district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located north of Old Folsom Road and south of Elk Vale Road. And I make a motion to continue this, per the applicant's request, to the September 4th city council meeting.
Motion by Scott, second by Peterson, to continue to the September 4th council meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 51.
Second reading, ordinance number 5849, supplemental appropriation number four for 2012, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 52.
Second reading, ordinance number 5854, an ordinance to provide for certain annual reports to be made to the common council by the finance officer by amending section 2.40.080 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts to approve. Any discussion? And we'll go to Mary Floto.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to note that since first reading this, there has been an amendment, and it is the requested comparison to the constitutional debt limit that has been added, per request.
Thank you, Mary. And that is part of the, the motion to approve. Thank you, Mary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 53. Amanda?
Second reading, ordinance number 5855, an ordinance permitting the sale of slingshots in the city of Rapid City by amending section 9.28.010 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott to approve, and a second by Sasso. And we'll go to Steve Lorenti.
That was my second, Mr. Mayor, but that's all right. Because I do love slingshots. It takes me back. But if I could, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask the city attorney, because what I'd like to, well, what I'm hoping that one of my colleagues will do is propose an amendment, and I'd like to get Joel's input as well. But my hope is that we can strip some of the language from this where we talk about some of the other things that they can't do with slingshots. I think that's probably a, a given, and I won't speak much more about it, but I'd like to hear from the attorney on that, how that would affect this ordinance if we take that out, because obviously, there are other laws that protect people from getting shot by a slingshot besides this ordinance, so.
Joel.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Sandborn will be happy to know that many of the city council will read his article in the paper, because I've had several of you today mention it and ask me about this. We're not adding a prohibition. I mean, there's already a prohibition in the ordinance about not using a slingshot against persons or property. It just, I know that it looks like the word "use" was added, but it was just a rewording of the ordinance after we removed the prohibition against selling the slingshots. So, we kept what was in there. There was two parts of it, that you couldn't sell or possess one, and then there was the second part, that you couldn't use it against anyone. When we amended the ordinance, we just took out the prohibition against selling it. The thought process, are there other laws that could be used? If, if I take a slingshot and I fire it at someone and I hit them, and I injure them, am I going to be charged with a Class II city ordinance violation? No, probably not. At that point, I'm going to be charged with a Class I misdemeanor, simple assault. It's a more serious crime. A Class I misdemeanor is a crime which is punishable by up to a year in the county jail and a $2,000 fine. A city ordinance violation is punishable by up to 30 days in the county jail and a $500 fine. Traditionally, it's a fine in the $100 range. What I will say is, if you do not want to prohibit the use of, of slingshots within the city against people or property, then you just need to repeal the entire ordinance, because there would be nothing left in it. If you believe there is some benefit to that, and, and what I would suggest to you is, the benefit would be a city ordinance violation might provide a nice intermediary between an intentional damage to property state misdemeanor or a simple assault state misdemeanor, and giving someone a warning. Obviously, when an officer goes out and they are called to a scene or they witness something, they have to use their discretion and decide how to handle it. In the case of a slingshot, I imagine that most of the time, it's probably going to result in a verbal warning. However, depending on the seriousness of what's occurred in the situation, the officer may not feel that that's appropriate, that they actually need to take some action. And if you had a Class II misdemeanor city ordinance violation, that, again, might provide them a nice in-between charge between that and a, and a state violation. If you repeal this, there will still be state violations if somebody were to damage property with a slingshot or injure somebody with a slingshot. But again, those become more serious crimes at that point, generally, and that would be the thought process when you decide how to proceed.
Thank you, Joel. One more question. So, if we leave the language in there, my question to you then is, does it allow the justice system to have the option? Or do we have to then do the lesser misdemeanor, the city level? Or do, does the legal system still have the option to go for the? I mean, because obviously, there could be some serious injury of somebody. I'm, I would prefer to err on the more severe side, which would prevent people from actually even thinking about doing it. But I guess my question is, does it allow the option? Does the legal system have the option to go for the more severe if we leave this language in the ordinance?
Yes. It'll be up to the officer writing the citation or the prosecuting authority, whether it be the state's attorney's office or the city attorney's office, to decide what the proper charge was.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, too, Mr. Sandborn, did read your article today, and I asked Joel the same question. And the way I understood it and the way you just explained it is it keeps Dennis the Menace from having to go to lockup. Basically, you know, I think it's a good way to keep it, just to give a, give a chance, get a chance, you know? They do stupid things, and I think leaving the language in the ordinance probably is the best way to do it. So, we don't have to go spending our time charging children with assault with a slingshot. So, I think I will go ahead and support the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Sasso.
I was just going to say pretty much about the same thing, that it would allow some flexibility for the legal system, any plea bargains. And there again, that slightly lighter slap on the wrist if it's not a significant issue and a good learning teaching tool. So, thank you.
Any further discussion on this topic? The motion is to approve. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 54. Amanda?
First reading, ordinance number 5848, for fiscal year 2013 appropriation ordinance, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Amanda, second by Lorenti to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to speak about this because we heard quite a bit of testimony, which I greatly appreciate from some of these different groups. But I think I, I don't really need to set the record straight. I don't feel the need to do that. But I want to reiterate some of the comments that I've made, because the subsidies budget was just the beginning of the conversation, which ended there because of the six-to-four vote at our budget hearings. So, I don't want, I want one of our subsidies, and, and to think that that's all we were looking at for savings, because that was just the beginning of the conversation when it was shut down. And the media was there, and if you go back and you listen to that budget hearing, you will see that the conversation was shut down before we could continue. That was what the vote was. It was to close the conversation, and that's a fact. You can go back and look at that meeting. And the other thing I wanted to vote, or not vote about, I'm going to do plenty of that yet. But what I wanted to talk about was my own appreciation for the arts, and I spoke about that at some of the previous meetings. What we're debating, ladies and gentlemen, is not how important the arts is. Nobody up here debates that. Nobody up here is saying, you know what? Our society could do much better without the arts. I put my sons through violin lessons, and my bank account can attest to my appreciation for the arts. I have sang my entire life not well, but I have a great appreciation for the arts, art itself. My wife and I have traveled far and looked gone just for the arts, just for art. And so, I don't want anybody to misconstrue, but the fact of the matter is, the conversation never happened. And the debate is not about whether the arts are good for society, because we don't debate that. None of us do. The debate is about whether we should take the next step and government should subsidize it. That's the debate. The debate is not about whether it's important or not. And so, none of us up here will say arts aren't important. The debate is about whether we should go take that extra step and say, now, government is responsible to make sure that it's successful, because the reality is that arts would be extremely successful without the government subsidizing it. There's no doubt about that. Because if we don't believe that, then we discount ourselves and our ability to make the arts what it is. There's no doubt about that. These people who dedicate their time, and you've heard some of them, would make sure that the arts is still successful without government being involved. We short-sell ourselves if we don't believe that. And so, that's what the debate has been about. It's not about passion for the arts. I'm, I'm more than willing to debate that, because I've always had a great passion for the arts. And so, that debate never happened, and that's where the debate belongs. It's not about whether art is good or bad, because that's unanimous. And so, I just wanted to set that record straight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
There we are. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Let's talk a little bit about that discussion that was taking place the other night at the budget hearing. I was hearing that we were going to go through each item that was on the community investments, not subsidies, but the investments that we had, where we're going to do one line at a time. There, there could have been an easier way of doing that discussion, or rather than going one through each line item at a time, is looking at the community investments, not subsidies, but investments within the community as a whole. And what I kept hearing in my perception of it was, and because I was criticized for being passionate about the whole thing, well, we just got to see a whole bunch of passion that was here from the citizens, who are visionaries as well, from the community. So, I'm going to remain passionate about this. And if, if there is any cuts to any one of these subsidies, in my mind, I see this as basically closing the doors, and we have to turn in the keys on those investments that we have to have out there. And they are a savings to the community. Fortunately, I am fortunate. I was able to have my daughter involved with the theater that was over at the Dahl at one time. Very fortunate. I was able to afford it. But there's a lot of people out there that cannot afford that. So, they get some help from the community and these investment communities that have the wherewithal to help out the people that are in need for the arts. One other thing that we haven't discussed about this is that we, we visited a little bit about the time when we are going to be negotiating with the police and fire. Please don't forget that we also have public works employees out there, airport employees. We've got Parks Water, Water Reclamation. And the list goes on. There's about three different, 13 other different divisions within the city that need to, to visit us about negotiations. So, please don't forget them either. And I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is something that, again, talking about the arts and the importance of the arts, I think we all have a certain level of appreciation of the arts. And every single person on this council supports it. The question, again, comes to the percentage. Hold on, I'll take off, take out my accent for a moment. Takes me a while to really get it warmed up, but.
Well, that wasn't Clint Eastwood. I was just wondering.
Actually, after about 10 minutes, I can really get it going. But, okay. So, but, but seriously, the discussion that I think what we were, what we were looking at is where is that percentage? What is it? Is it that 35%? Is it 30%? No one wants to shut the doors. Absolutely no one wants to. The other thing to keep in mind is that, like, for instance, in the case of the Journey Museum, you know, this past year, we exceeded a third of a million dollars. Part of the reason for that, even though the budget was $325,000, is because we are, the city, is responsible for the building of the Journey and the Dahl. So, as things come up, we will be paying for those, as we should, as that is, that is a huge part of our investment. So, again, the question of, are we? How much are we subsidizing beyond the facility? That's where the discussion really needs to go. And that's, that's, I think, what we were targeting. So, anyway. Would you rather that I went back to the British accent?
You're right.
I'll just use the plain, old-fashioned West River accent for you, Ron. I'm a resident Rapid City guy, born and raised here, and someday, I'll probably be a ghost behind Stan. That's a promise. But let me tell you, Rapid City is a dynamic community, and I'm sick and tired of this debate over pocket change of turning us into Gotham City. I do not want to live in a community that's different shades of gray. We have a lot of art. We have culture. We have music. We have all kinds of things going for us. And for us as a council, to be unwilling to support that within our means is unconscionable. I think that the members of this community should keep this in mind when Election Day comes around. And you remember those people that supported for the well-run of Rapid City and those that didn't. I support the arts, period. I'm not done yet. We're talking about the budget, right?
We are.
There's a couple items in here that I ran through the appropriation, and I think we need to get squared away. And I could be in error, housekeeping, but I did not see, we voted the other night to include four new officers, and I don't see that yet. Is that going to be taken care of?
Mary, we'll go to Mary Floto, Finance Office.
Still not there. Thank you, Mayor. I did look at that. The difference is the government, or general fund to general fund intergovernmental transfers, interdepartment transfers. So, the police had those in their expenses. Those have been reduced out of their expenses. It was $217,000 or something like that. And so, when you net that against the $215 for the four officers, that's the difference.
I just want to make darn sure, come January 1, the chief could post four new officers. Thank you.
Yes, you may.
The other thing is, I'm not convinced. I've been trying to sort through this document to confirm that we're investing additional money into our infrastructure, primarily streets and some drainage, and I'm not convinced of that. I'm already willing and able to have more discussions with the mayor and staff, but I want to make darn sure we're fixing our streets, and I'm not convinced we are enough. And we'll talk more, but I just want to make sure that it's either explained to me that it's there, or we're going to take action to get it there. I am concerned. And I think that's pretty much all I want to say right now, in my West River accent. Thank you.
Jerry, do you mind if I ask you a question?
Sure.
When you're referring, are you referring to the, the chart and clarification of the chart that was included in the budget and then updated earlier this summer? Or are you referring to additional spending beyond what was presented just recently?
Mayor, I'm trying to determine through this resolution where funding has been actually increased by this ordinance for infrastructure reconstruction and repair. I'm not convinced of that. I know we've talked about if there's excess cash, unencumbered cash, we can make a supplement to the budget, but I'm not convinced. to the budget, but I'm not convinced, I just need to be shown it. I couldn't find it.
I appreciate...
If I'm in there, I'll be happy, if it's there, I'll be just happier than a clam.
I appreciate the question, and we'll attempt to have the answer by second reading. And we talked about it earlier.
Thank you.
You and I talked about it earlier today, but then...
Right.
Some of it, some of it has to do with the .16 fund and capital improvements, and where those budgets are allocated.
Right.
We'll have that answer.
I just want to make sure, because we do second reading, this thing's law, and I don't want to mess it up. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The queen mother there threw me off my game. I'm sitting here, you know, we're talking about funding, I guess, of the arts from the government. I guess, if everybody's ever been to Washington, D.C., walked down the National Mall, I think it's a pretty good, a pretty good example of the government funding the arts. I realize a lot of those museums have endowments. But, you know, there's definitely a lot of public money tied up in that area. And it's, I think, to our benefit as a society, and as a, you know, just overall, it just does a lot to enrich our lives. I don't think anybody's going to argue those museums are not valid and they're not useful. I think that the Journey Museums just are our version of that. We don't have a lot of that in Rapid City, but I think we do, it's important that we do have those things in our lives, and the Adolphine Art Center as well. You know, we're not, we're not talking huge amounts of money. I realize it's a lot of money, but it's not, compared to what we do a lot of things in this, this, this city, that a lot of people don't, a lot of people don't play sports. I have a son who's a very gifted athlete. He's really big into BMX right now, and he's riding all the time. He's great at it. Where my daughter doesn't really care about athletics, she's more into dancing. She's only four years old, of course, and I've already missed her bedtime. But the fact of the matter is, is, you know, everybody's different, and we're just trying to make it as diverse as we can. You know, it's not a lot. We get a lot of money backing it. We do a lot of diversionary programs. Out of those, down at the Doll, they, they fund a lot of scholarships for the children that are down there. They can't afford it. It keeps them off the streets and keeps them, keeps them responsible citizens, gives them an outlet for what otherwise could be a good chance to go out and shoot somebody with a slingshot. You know? So, I just want to make sure we understand, this isn't taxpayers' money being thrown out the door. It really is a community investment. It's keeping our quality of life up there. It's an economic return. People do invest in our community because of it. They come here because of it, to see it. And it's, I think it's just another one of those things we're doing to increase the quality of life. Like the senator said, people want quality of life before they make their big jobs here, their big businesses here. It's why we have such a good park system, and I'm really proud of that, too. So, I just want to make sure we understand, I don't think we're wasting this taxpayers' dollars once again. I think this is something that's vital to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. We have a motion to approve number item 54. We do not have any additional speaker requests, any from the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take a brief recess, and then we'll come back in 10 minutes and start with item 55. Hey, everyone, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Everyone. And we'll start with item number 55. Amanda, can you read this into the record for us?
First reading ordinance number 5861, an ordinance revising the Compass Independent Audit Program by amending chapter 2.95 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Peterson to approve. And we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion to include, I guess, you know, I'm trying to think of the right wording for it, but that we would make sure that this Compass Committee and its efforts stay independent as stated. And I would like to offer the motion to, I guess, keep council off of the Compass Committee, including leadership of the council, so that it can maintain its independence. And so, you know, I know it's kind of convoluted, but the motion is actually, or the amendment is about making sure that the council leadership is not part of the Compass Committee, and that would be my motion, or my amendment to the motion.
We have an amendment to the mo... Steve, can you clarify your amendment?
Yeah, good question.
Did you say council or, or, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I think I just want to keep it to leadership, because I know this is something that was discussed when Compass was being put together originally. So, just leadership of the city council.
Would, would, or would not be?
Would not, would not be.
Okay. Everyone understands the motion. Do you have, we have, is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Steve, you still have the floor?
I'm just opening the floor discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we're now speaking about the amendment only, so we'll go to Ron Sasso.
You know, I, I believe the way the, at least the way I read the ordinance, it appears that it would already include council leadership, that, at least, I don't know if I'm misinterpreting that. Joel, could you?
No, the way the ordinance is currently drafted and the way it's proposed to be drafted would not prevent council leadership from serving. I would, the way the ordinance was originally drafted, the council leadership actually appointed the members, the council members of the Compass Committee. At the Compass Committee, there was a discussion about preventing council leadership. It was decided not to pursue that, and what they, but they did want the Compass, the council Compass members, to be approved by the, the city council. So, the direction was to make it so that the names were forwarded by the council leadership, and they were approved by the city council, but it does not prevent the council leadership from serving on the Compass Committee. I would just note that currently, one of the Compass Committee members is council leadership, so that if you were to approve that, that person would then not be allowed to serve on the Compass Committee.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I think, on the one hand, it's a, it's a difficult discussion, and at the same time, I think when we look at the, the goal of Compass, to be as unpoliticized as possible, I think there, there's some validity in that. You know, I definitely want to hear some more of the discussion on this, though. So, thank you.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I find this intriguing, and I guess what I'd want to know are some frank discussion about what motivates this. Why do you want to keep two people that are on the council from serving in this capacity? Because we already have, being in leadership, we already have trouble filling our committees, because we have people that can't go to committee meetings, or they choose, they don't think it's part of their job, and so they choose not to go. So, that's going to get your pool down to very few people that could actually go and attend these meetings. So, I'm just wondering what the big fear is about council leadership. I mean, I'm very open to this. I'm not on the Compass Committee, but I just know, speaking from being in leadership, that it's hard to, you know, to get enough people to go around. Some people will kill themselves going to meetings trying to cover for other people. And so, I'm just wondering why we want to go down this road of complicating it. So, I, I think we should have a frank discussion up here and say what our concerns are. Thank you.
We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'm the one who brought the conversation up in the first place, and here's how that happened. A little bit of history. Being the mother of this project, I've been with it from conception to our current point in time. And when the, the original steering committee was trying to help the city attorney develop the language for this ordinance, it was mentioned that leadership shouldn't be involved in, as far as the committee goes. Now, the conversation went a little bit like this. It was, it was from former council president Dave Davis. And he said council leadership, talking himself, should not be appointed to this committee, because in order for that to have happened, he would have had to, number one, appoint himself. And number two, I'll just be quite frank, since Bonnie's asked for it, the relationship between Alderman Davis and the mayor at the time was becoming strained, and Davis didn't want to exacerbate the issue. So, he wasn't talking about it in the form of a policy that we will forever prevent council leadership from serving on that committee. It was because of the dynamics of the people involved, perhaps we should not go that route. Now, we fast forward a little bit, and when we were, Kellen was on board and we're looking at some cleanup items for this ordinance, I mentioned it again, not having quite remembered the whole conversation. You know, well, weren't we going to exclude leadership? Couldn't remember the premise, ran it by Joel, finally fished out the, the explanation I just gave you, and realized that there, there really was, for reasons Alderwoman Peterson has already stated, no reason to unfairly, perhaps, whittle down the pool of people that could serve on this committee. It is a, quite a time-consuming committee, and I'm invested, so, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
I guess I have to ask the question, why they want to restrict it? Because, number one, it's a committee of the council, correct? And secondly, the council approves membership. So, if we have an issue with someone being in there, we can speak then.
And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Basically, Alderman Wright just said what I, the point that I was going to bring up. Based on this ordinance that we're reading into tonight, is that the representative, council representatives will be approved by the council. So, I wouldn't recommend we restrict the pool of people that could go and serve on this committee either. That's the point I wanted to bring up, is that the council would be approving the council people that would be going on to this committee. Thank you.
We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
In short, we're, we'll be missing on some good talent if we don't bring in everyone from the council, excluding the leadership. Today would be denying a good talent that we have available to us. I would have disagreed with Alderman Davis, that if that's what he was proposing at that time, because I believe that we, we do not need to discriminate good talent. Thank you.
And then we'll go to Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is more of a question. I looked at a draft of that ordinance, and it seems to me that initially, the way the ordinance was drafted, is it specifically prohibited council leadership from, from being members of the committee? And then that was stricken out and changed. I, I don't know why. And if it had been a problem early on with Dave Davis appointing himself, then we're back in that same situation now, I think. You know, so I, I, I'm trying to phrase that as a question, so if, if I can say that and put a question mark at the end of it, I'm asking that question. Are we not in the same place now, with council leadership appointing council leadership to the committee, where it wasn't a good idea before, but now it's a good idea now? So, I guess, I'm confused.
Are you directing that question? Anybody in particular?
Anybody who chooses, so can answer.
We'll go to Charity to clarify.
All right. The two points of clarification. I and Alderman Roberts were appointed by former council leadership. Our term does not expire until July of 2014, or 2013, rather. And to address the language that you saw, there has never been an approved version of this ordinance. This is the first time we've opened it up that said council leadership is excluded. What you most likely saw is a in-between, or an interim revision that was testing out that language that the Compass Committee looked at. We said, you know, no, it wasn't our job to, to do that, so we went back to what it was. We have never once again approved the language that said that. So, that's what you'll see if, if you take a look at the current drafts. It's just fixing things that our chief auditor has caught, just to make sure everything is, is in line.
Anything further, Bill?
If I may, I'd just like to follow up with another question, then. Is it the chief auditor's position then to have changed that language? Or is it the committee's position to change the language? And then it would seem that the committee, you know, and I, I don't mean this to sound at all accusatory, but, you know, if you're on that committee, Alderman Doyle, and, and you certainly have a vested interest in whether the language changes or which direction it changes. So, it would be a place, if it's a committee decision, it would be a place, I, I think, because of a conflict, where, you know, you should certainly recuse yourself, and then it would fall on somebody else's shoulders to make that decision.
So, I would be appointed to a committee that I would have to, I don't think that's where you want to go.
I did.
So, he's saying that, that the chief auditor's the one who brought forward the changes. And bottom line, Mr. Clayton, is that none of us that started this program were experts in that field. So, we hire the expert, and he realizes there's, there were a couple of inconsistencies, minor at that, making sure that we got that ordinance in tip-top shape. One of his first comments when we were interviewing him was that it was a fabulous ordinance. The work that went into it was very forward-thinking, and we appreciated that. He caught some things while he was interviewing for the job, and I said, you know what, if you get the job, bring them back up, so we can take a look at them. He brought some recommendations to the committee, just as any staff member brings recommendations to this council. We, as a committee, decided to adopt them, or make the recommendation to the council to adopt them. And here we are. The council has given the Compass Committee the authority to do just that. Thank you.
And we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't really know where I'm going to go from here. Pete, can, could I ask Pete Wernick a question? He is actually the chairman of the Compass Committee. Could you kind of give us a timeline on how this all came about in the ordinance?
Well, it's pretty much been explained by, by Joel, okay? The, the suggestion of not, or having the council leadership on the committee was discussed. It was brought up by Charity, as she said. As a matter of fact, I gotta make a statement about that, is I was actually for banning the leadership at first, but it was pointed out that that's 20% of the council. And the reason that I was objecting to it was, the leadership could appoint themselves, and the council could not stop it. The language that we adapted was to say, okay, if you're going to open it up to leadership, at least have the council members that are appointed to the committee vetted the same way that we, as the private citizens, were. It would be a fair balance. That's where it's at. At no time did Kellen make this suggestion. This was coming from the committee itself. Kellen's suggestions in the changes to the ordinance had much more to do with the, the auditing process, and some of the verbal language that it was used. Is that clear enough?
I think it is. Thank you very much.
Okay. And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, if I may ask the motion maker a question?
You may.
Mr. Laurenti, I guess what is the, knowing what I know about council leadership, and generally, their, relatively, their, most of their power just comes from appointing to committees, and after that, they're more or less just a liaison for us. What is, what do you see, what's your point, I guess, what's your danger, as you feel, that's coming from this?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. The reason I brought it forward is because, one, I know that the discussion has gone on before in the development of the Compass Committee. And I think what's important, especially with this, because we're all, we're all looking forward to the results that are going to come out of this group. And as you read a lot of this ordinance, and you read a lot of the, the memos attached to it, there's this talk of... to it, there's this talk of independence. That word is often used in all of this. And so, real or perceived, if we have council, or if we especially have leadership from the council on the committee, you know, again, real or perceived, I think people on the, on the council, and outside of the council, may construe some of the results from this compass committee as being driven by somebody who's a leader on the city council itself. So this isn't about this particular council, but this is for all councils going forward, all mayor administrations going forward, that this group, because we all believe it's going to be successful, is to make sure that the perception is that it is independent from the council. Because ultimately, all of the things that this group is going to bring forward will come to the council for vote. And the last thing anybody on the council, not just this one, again, all future councils, we want to make sure that anybody who's serving on this council has a clear mind, that there wasn't somebody who's in leadership on this committee driving some agenda, real or perceived. And that's the whole point, is that this was billed and sold as something that was going to be independent, report to the council ultimately, and we would make that decision. So ultimately, we're going to make that decision. But we want to make sure the results that come from this committee are pure, are driven by things that they see that are important, and that are going to make city government more efficient, you know, and that type of thing. So, again, it goes back to whether it is real or perceived. And that is, you know, we need to all remember that we're all not going to be serving on this council for the rest of our lives. So this perception of this group and the success of it, I think, is important about that independence that it talks about in the ordinance and the memos attached to it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your concerns and your answer. I do appreciate you taking the time. I guess I'm not quite sure, I, once again, I, I don't want to take away from the job they're doing, but I don't see the leadership having any undue influence on leaving me. The truth being told, I think that they've got no more power than anybody else sitting up here. They got one vote on the council at the end of the day. And I, you know, someday, maybe you'll be sitting in leadership. You know, I don't think that's, I don't think it's a politically-driven position to be on the head of the council. I don't know, maybe it is, maybe just, just for committee assignments, but I, I fail to see the, the difference between me sitting there or the council president. So I will not be in support of this motion. Thank you.
Steve, I think there's some confusion. You've said, you said several times in your remarks, council shouldn't be on compass. I'm not sure what you're, are you?
Yeah, council leadership, my apologies.
Right, council leadership.
Correct.
Okay. Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, listening, listening to the discussion, I think it's a good discussion to have, but also, as I think about the purpose of compass, and where we want it to go, and the checks and balances that appear to be in here now, looking at whoever is appointed, we would be needing to, as a council, approve. I think that is, that is something that's, that's important, that we are going through those checks and balances. I think the, the other thing, too, if we start looking at the entire process becoming too political, I think one of the things that, that was built in regarding the audits would be that there would be a chance for response, that two-week time, to respond to any findings. So I think from that standpoint, that also further may de-politicize this. And then lastly, if we're looking at a potentially two-year terms for people who are appointed to compass, then, am I, then we are, one year, okay. Strike that. Ignore that. But, yeah, I apologize, sorry. But, but I, if, if something, I could potentially see the council president more so, but I think as it is, it is fine. If anything, if we want it to change it, I would say if we're looking at a two-thirds vote, that would be one way to change it. But I think right now, as, as it sits, I think it is probably fine. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a few comments to make, but we'll go through these next few lights here. Steve? Okay. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of clarifications, questions for Alderman, Alderwoman Doyle, if I may. Charity, the, first of all, the recommendations that are coming from the current council leadership are just recommendations. So we get to vote on those to go over to the compass committee?
You mean for the actual appointees?
Correct.
Correct. What we did is we just put in writing what we actually did as a council.
Correct.
When we were forming this committee.
So.
The language was just slightly unclear. So me, having, you know, again, mothered this, when I would read it, I would see the intent I had. When a couple other people read it, some would see my intent, others would see, well, wait a minute, that looks this way.
Yep.
And so all we did is clarify the language to reflect what we did, and that, what that committee as a whole was approved by the full council.
Alderman Sasso made a good comment about checks and balances. I'm just doing a couple of follow-up questions for that. If I may, is that, what I've seen from the council leadership is recommendations to the compass committee, and they're just simply recommendations, and we, as the council, get to vote on those recommendations.
Well, remember.
Appointees, I mean.
Compass is the first program that is in the legislative arm. We, as a council, have never had our own program before. So we are the people. I mean, we are elected by our wards to represent them. And so the, there, there's checks and balances galore throughout this entire process. So this is, they are, they work for us.
Yes.
We don't, you know, if we had total independence, and, and there were, there was no council representation on that, who knows what could happen?
Yep.
And the reason, just, you know, and, and again, to try to, to honor, there are some people who believe that as soon as, you know, we, we, we want you to be our representative, but as soon as you're elected, you're now one of them and not one of us. We honored that. And that's why we had three citizens at large to two council people, to make sure that that ratio, that there, there were always more of them than there were of us, if you will. So again, another layer of checks and balances, just to make sure that, you know, we were as fair as we could possibly be, to try to counteract some of what we knew the perception could be.
So the short answer is, yes, we get to do another set of, a layer of checks and balances.
Absolutely.
The, the next part of it is, as it, they, these recommendations come from the committee, they come back as a recommendation simply to the council.
Correct.
For another point of check and balance, so that we have an opportunity to vote on that recommendation from the compass, compass committee.
Right. They do their work, or, so far, he does his work, brings us the, the findings on, you know, any given plan. We're, we're fortunate to have a condensed plan for the remainder of 2012, so we'll be seeing some things here at the end of this year. We'll be getting updates midstream as the audit work falls underway. And, yeah, comes up, here's what it is, here's some recommendations of things that we can change, based on the findings that I have fished up. And we, as a council, get to decide, you know, do we buy into it? Do we not? What, what recommend, I mean, we have the final say.
Correct. And then, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this, a part of it, and other members of the city council, is that there is multiple layers of checks and balance, despite who gets appointed.
Correct.
And we, we have a, a say, a voice, in whose those appointments are.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll go to the floor.
I would like to make a couple of comments, and, you know, I have, I have not made a lot of comments, at least publicly, regarding the compass program, although I will state that I think it's an exciting program, and it's a great check and balance for, for government, and it's something that I strongly support, that I'm fairly convinced that, you know, some of my predecessors probably wouldn't have been all that in favor of, because what it does is it takes authority away from the executive branch and gives it to the legislative branch. And I think that it's a worthwhile program. As we move forward, and as this community continues to grow, that level of accountability is really important. And on that note, regarding the, the checks and balances, I think it's important to add some context to how the discussion came up on council leadership being part of the compass committee. It was not the, the dynamics of the people in, involved. It was, it was born out of the discussion of should the mayor have, whoever the mayor is, have mayoral appointments to the compass committee? The answer was no. And in the same breath, or three breaths later, it was also decided that council leadership would not be on the committee. That is what happened. That was the discussion. There was multiple discussions on that. And so if we want to change that tune now, I think that that requires some additional discussion. Because I, I for one, think that it's just fine to, to not have the, the mayor making appointments to the compass committee. The mayor has the privilege of appointing every other committee, or just about every other committee in, in city government. And I think that that, that's reasonable. But it is also important to note that it was, it was in that same, very same discussion, where council leadership was not going to be involved for, for the same, you know, type of reason, in terms of checks and balance. And I think it's insulting to suggest that it was simply because of a, of a personality conflict. We have personality disagreements all the time up here, but we agree to be agreeable, even when we, even when we disagree. So I think it's important to, to dial this, this back to what the original discussion was. And there was multiple discussions, and council leadership was not going to be involved for the same reason, for the same reason, folks, that the mayor was not going to make appointments to the, the committee. The council leadership would be able to recommend appointments, but council leadership themselves would absolutely not serve on the committee. And that was, that was discussed multiple times, not just in passing. And that was my understanding when this, when this ordinance came, came forward. And I think it's important to clarify. Thank you.
I'm a little bit confused, but I jotted down some notes, and I'll just start at the top. There was talk about leadership would have an agenda. I mean, any of us can have an agenda. You know, some are, you know, no tax at no, any cost. I mean, we all have our little pet things that we like to vote on, so I just don't see that that separates leadership. Charity was appointed when she was not in leadership, and so was John, and...
Still not in leadership.
Right. But, but they were both appointed, they weren't in leadership at the time the appointment took place. And it just took a while for compass to get off the ground, so, you know, here we are. I don't, being part of leadership, this is my second year, is I know that myself and Dave Davis, that we both, and Charity here, we try to bend over backwards to try to be fair, and listen to, you know, all sides. Because it doesn't help, you know, it doesn't help our council, you know, if I don't like your idea and I'm constantly bashing you or something, or just saying, oh, you're stupid, and I'm going to do this. Because it's important that we all work together, because I'm in leadership, but I only have one vote. I mean, I don't have any more votes than anyone else does. And there's been lots of times I tried to go one way, and nobody would follow me. You know, so, you know, so being in leadership in itself, I don't think is a big, a big deal. And, Mayor, I'm a little confused about what you said, because it seems to me that you're equating council leadership to the mayor. But we don't control department heads, we don't be, get to veto. I don't, I don't understand, I mean, I kind of get the feeling from what you said, and I might be wrong, so hopefully you'll clarify. But it almost sounds like you're one, since we said the mayor couldn't be on, or not the mayor, but, you know, your mayoral appointee, then you think somehow leadership, like that there's disparity or something, I guess. But I don't see how, I mean, I'm just a schmo that, you know, meets on the Fourth of July with Charity to try to figure out what, who we're going to put in what committees. I mean, that's not a glamorous job, and I don't, people don't run calling me. I mean, a lot of times I hear things from, from everyone else, that you've, someone's called you, and I, you know, they didn't call me, trying to sway my vote, or anything like, or that. So I don't see, I, I might be just being naive, but I don't see why, why we need to do this, to exclude leadership. I don't know. I've only been here on, for two years, so maybe, you know, someone like yourself, Mayor, that's been here longer, might know better, but I, I don't know. I guess I would like someone to explain better to me why, why it's different. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think what's important here, and I, I'm hoping my colleagues are, and I know they are, they're paying attention intently. And I think the reality here of this debate is the very crux of the problem. The reason we need to pass this is because we're having this debate about this. It's a reflection of how quickly something that is supposed to be independent needs to stay as independent as possible. And so this debate makes my point, that we need to make sure, real or perception, that we do not have leadership on this committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jerry.
Go first.
Question's been called. Any objections to calling the question? We were talking about the motion only to amend. Only if you're objecting. Are you objecting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second to Steve's motion, or Jerry's motion to close debate?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, my Nordstrom. We're going to proceed to a vote only on whether or not to end debate. A yes is to end debate, a no is to keep debating. All in favor of ending debate on this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roberts.
No.
Wright.
Aye.
Laurenti.
No.
Sasso.
No.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Clayton.
No.
Peterson.
Aye.
Doyle.
No.
Lewis. Motion fails, four to six.
Okay. We'll now proceed to Ron Sasso. Ron?
I'd like to offer an amendment to the amendment. The amended motion, would that be?
State your amendment, and then we'll decide whether it needs to be a substitute motion or an amendment.
Or substitute, probably would be a substitute. To not allow the, have it be the council president be excluded from compass. And if I can have, get a second, then I would explain why.
Okay, so, we're going to take that, then, as a, Joel, would that be a?
Substitute.
A substitute amendment?
Ultimately, Mayor, you're the chairman of the meeting. I, I'll be honest, I'm not a parliamentarian, and that is, at, at some point, you should start voting on the motions, disposing of them, and then making a new motion, or...
We, we have an amendment on, on the floor, so unless you want to offer a substitute motion, then we're not going to accept any more amendments. We're going to vote on one amendment at a time. So, you still have the floor, if you want to...
A substitute motion to limit, to just president. To limit the exclusion to just council president.
Do you mind if I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
And I'm reluctant to make suggestions on this program, because I don't want to be, I don't want to be criticized as, as getting, you know, involved in a, you know, in, in one of the council's few programs and opportunities to hold City Hall accountable. So what I'd like to, what I'd like to suggest is, rather than go through this rigmarole of, 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 you know, who gets appointed and who doesn't get appointed, and who makes the appointments, why don't you just, why don't you amend the procedures so that at the first council meeting in July, right about the time you, you appoint council leader, elect council...
elect council leadership, that you also hold elections for, for the two Compass spots. And then you take all of this off the table as far as who makes the appointments and then it doesn't put council leadership in the awkward position of wanting to still be on the committee and then having to, having to have a confirmation by the council. It takes it, if they have enough votes and they're nominated, then, then you're done. Be just like council president, vice president, then you have two, two more elections for Compass spot number one and Compass spot number two. My suggestion to try to help move the process forward. And I see that as, as clean and relatively non-political. And I said it without an accent. You still have the floor.
I, I appreciate that, but I, I lean towards my substitute motion. And I guess if I could get a second.
Is there a second for Ron's motion? Is there a second?
Your motion has a second.
Okay, so it's not dead yet. And, and here, here, here is why I am, I've, as I'm hearing the discussion, and I know the biggest, the biggest concern is of this becoming political. And one of the things that, when you look at council leadership and their role, that I think we do need to take into consideration, particularly with the president, is that, you know, God forbid, something happens, that is the person who is first in line to take over. So in many ways, that is like the president and vice president, you know, of the United States, but except mayor and, and, so that is why I am, I would be looking at it from that perspective. I know an argument can be made for any leadership position, but I do think that there is a difference between council president and council vice president. That's just, that's what I'm, I'm looking at. So, and I'm looking beyond just what we have here today. I'm thinking towards the future as well. So, thank you.
And we'll go to Jerry Wright. Question's been called. Any objections to calling the question? No objections. We're going to proceed directly to the vote on Ron Sasso's amendment.
Substitute amendment.
Substitute, substitute amendment. It's a substitute amendment. All in favor of the substitute amendment, please say aye.
Aye. It was requested that you restate it, please.
Okay. The substitute amendment is to not allow the council president to serve on the Compass Committee. And that's to, that's an amendment to the, to the ordinance. Everyone understands? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Do we need a roll call? More than? Go ahead and let's do a roll call here.
Wright.
No.
Larente.
Aye.
Sasso.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
No.
Scott.
No.
Clayton.
No.
Peterson.
Aye.
Doyle.
No.
Lewis.
No.
Roberts.
Aye.
Three to seven. Fails.
All right. And we are now to the motion to approve, first reading. Any further discussion on the, on the, actually, we can't have any discussion on the motion, the question's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on first reading. Thank you, everyone. Item 56. Amanda.
Deny request for amendment to community investment dispersion, dispersment policy, and I make a motion to approve the denial.
Motion by Scott, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Any discussion? Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those came up for Legal and Finance, and once again, I'm just voicing my support against the denial. I think that the chamber hasn't, after questioning Pauline at Legal and Finance, she said there wasn't gonna be an undue burden put on the finance office to do this, and it seemed like it was just, if it helped them out, it was a good idea. They're not up here every week, every month, asking for us to do something for them, so I can, not being supportive of the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Chad. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I would like to make an amendment that, with the denial, that we also have the allocation, their monthly allocation go to eight months for this next, for the future, instead of the 12 months, so that they won't have the same problem next year.
Is that motion already in? Clarify.
Right, but we're.
It was in the request.
Right.
So you can offer a substitute motion if you want to approve their request.
I thought, was my understanding that they were wanting the, us to give them the $11,000, which I can deny that because it's a bookkeeping error, but I think we need to fix the problem for them. Because otherwise, they'll have the same problem next year, and next year.
They're in a different budget year than we are, that's all.
It's hard being divided.
Linda, would you be willing to come up and help us with this one? And, and help us understand, is this a, a one-year problem or an every-year problem? I think that that's one of the concerns the council is wrestling with.
I don't know how to answer that. Our end of year is August 31st. So if we count September, October, or no, yeah, September, October, November, December to the next year, we'll show this, the full amount, the $33,000, if you choose to give us $33,000 again. But by doing that, we would have to take an $11,000 hit to our bottom line this year. If we go, I did talk to the accountants, if we go to the accountants and say, okay, it's an accounts receivable, and we'll be receiving it, then that shows that it'll still be on this year, but then next year, when it starts, when we get to this year again, we'll be minus another quarter. So it just depends on how we want to do it. That's why we thought if you would, if you'd pass the $11,000 by the end of August, and then next year, we do it by eight months, then it would get it all back on schedule.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because for 25 years, it always has been paid in January, and then because of the cash flow, they decided to disperse it out. And I realize it's just that our fiscal years are different than yours.
And my substitute motion would be to deny the shortage of $11,000, but that in the next allocation be in eight months instead of 12 months.
You mean the first eight months?
Correct. The first eight months, so that they don't have this issue every year.
Okay. We have a substitute motion. Do we have a second? We have a second?
For discussion.
Okay, we have a second. We have a, a second for discussion. Bonnie, you still have the floor, if you're gonna explain.
Okay. Well, it seems in my mind, and I might have this wrong, but I talked to Linda briefly, is that if we keep paying them in 12 months, then every year, they're gonna have this shortage of $11,000, or they care. I mean, I realize it's a bookkeeping issue.
Yeah.
But for 25 years, they've always been paid one, you know, once a month, or once a year, I'm sorry. And so then we went to, once every 12 months. So they've been proud of their books, the way they've been kept, and I don't see it's asking too much to say, next time, we'll do it in eight months. We've made, have different arrangements with some different groups. So I don't see that, that is a hardship for us, and it would help them. So that's my rationale for that. Yeah.
I'm going to Ron Sasso. Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just ask a question that I thought, in reviewing the tape, was answered at Legal and Finance. So with this exception, if you get this exception this one time, this year, this one time, it's not going to be a problem in the future? That you would fix, you would be prepared for that in the future, the eight-month payments?
If we get the exception this year, and then in January, we divide by eight months, then yes, it will fix, fix it from then on. If not, if you decide to always do it 12 months, then we'll take the $11,000 hit now, and then it will just always be just a little skewed. But, I mean, we can work with that, too. It's just taking $11,000 hit is a little tough.
I will be support, or, well, not support, yeah, the double negative thing here, so I won't be supporting the denial. Thank you, Mayor.
Amanda.
I'm just gonna clarify something because the reason I was objecting to this is I didn't want to set precedent for other organizations coming and asking us to change what we already put in motion with spreading it out over our time periods. And what was just brought up is that we're already making exceptions. Mary, is that correct? We've already made exceptions to doing a 12-month dispersal?
I don't know that we have any actual exceptions at this point. We have, depending upon the amount, some of them are paid one time because they have such a small amount, some are monthly, some are, you know, so depending upon the amount, the original was set up, I'm, I'm not sure I'm aware of any exceptions.
Okay. So again, the reason I was going for the denial is I understand, Linda, you're gonna take a hit, but then your 12 months would be spread out, and I'm just looking out for the city's books, and I think a monthly dispersment would be better, and so that's the reason I'm supporting the denial of this. It's just a bookkeeping and we'll get back on track here, so, thank you.
Okay. We'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Can you change your budget year?
I'm not accountant. I don't know. Those accountants that are in here, can you just switch your budget year? I mean, we've had it August 31st, or September 1st to August 31st for as long as I can ever remember. I don't know. I would say it would be.
I don't know.
It'd be interesting to do that.
Worth a shot. I'd, that's a question I wanted to ask, I guess, so we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Linda, I appreciate all your work and everything that you're doing on this, but I've got to ask Mary Floto just a little bit more clarification on this, because I'm just not comfortable with what's happening on the city side. So Mary, can you kind of explain, am I understanding correctly, Alderwoman Scott mentioned that it, it would kind of upset the apple cart on our side? Am I understanding that correctly?
It would be an exception if we did this. I think as far as finance, we're probably flexible, that we will do whatever you say. Our request would be that if you do approve to pay the $11,000 now, that you do the eight months, so that we don't keep having the same discussion annually. So that would be our request there.
And that's not in the motion, correct? Right now?
No, right now, the motion.
To deny the?
Motion right now, Richie, is to deny, deny it for this year, but change it to eight months starting next year.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Chad Lewis.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Well, once again, so just clarification for everybody out here, and for the public watching, all we're asking, you're asking us to do, which Pauline had said earlier, at Legal and Finance, is not a big burden on the financial situation, the city or, for the financial office. Am I correct in believing that, Mary?
We, we can do it. We just have, we allocate, we do a spreadsheet and we allocate, and, and we'll just change that.
Right. But it won't be a big issue for the city overall? It's not like we're unbalancing the budget because we're doing this or anything, creating a lot of staff, extra work?
No, not, not a huge amount, no.
Okay. And going forward, it would fix the problem? I mean, we'll be fixing the problem with the, with the included part of the motion? Is that correct?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. So that's all we're asking to do is maybe temporarily put a patch on it and then get it, fix it for the future, is basically what the whole request is about, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I would just urge my fellow alderpersons to defeat this motion and move forward with approving the request. Thank you.
Linda, I have a quick question for you. Do you, do you have an MO, do you have an MOU, you know, like with, like what we've done with some of the other organizations, or, or is it an annual investment request?
Annual investment request.
Okay, not an MOU. Because that would be another way to address it going forward, would be to, to establish an MOU, which takes the relationship between the city and the chamber beyond, you know, a handshake, so to speak, and that, that might be something worth, worth pursuing, and that's, it could be addressed in that context as well, so just.
And that's something that I would pursue, or the chamber would pursue?
Something that we can, that we can certainly talk about. I'm open to that. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just, if I could, please, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mary one question, if I could. It may lead to more than one, so I'll leave that open. The denial was at the behest of the finance office, is that correct? To deny the request?
I think our biggest concern is just opening this up. Because if every group comes in and we have a special request for every group, everything, you know, everything's on spreadsheet and we have to every month do every, recalculate and make sure we have it all right all the way through. And if we start changing, that, that creates a.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say, and, and I agree with Alderwoman Scott on this, I think we're kind of opening Pandora's box, and we need to think about, I think it's good for the chamber, and I'd like to accommodate them, but the reality is, is what our staff is telling us, which is why they've told us to deny it, because we would be opening Pandora's box, and we have a lot, we all know, we have a lot of different groups who are receiving money from Rapid City, and are we gonna want to entertain every one of their, you know, requests to make an exception? And so I think we're gonna be opening Pandora's box. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Amanda.
Actually, I was in the queue, but basically, the discussion between Alderman Larente and Mary said it all. Basically, my objection is setting the precedent. Finance may be able to make those payments now, but if we open this Pandora's box, all of a sudden, that's what I'm worried about, is our finances being affected by multiple organizations with a different fiscal year, coming back to the city and making special requests. So in order to not set precedence, I'm recommending denial.
Chad Lewis.
This is the last thing I thought I'd set a record for a number of times speaking on, but as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, and if I'm wrong, I stand corrected, what finance is requesting is if we do do this, we're asking for all groups to be eight months, or eight, just, just this chamber?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that's their request. They would like to have all the payments by August.
Okay.
So if we're gonna do this, then next year, it just makes sense to just get it done by August, rather than them coming back and having to say, we need to do it again and again.
Thank you for the clarification. That's all I need.
Charlene, could we have clarification on the motion?
The, the motion I have, I believe it's a substitute by Peterson, to deny the $11,000 shortage for 2012, and beginning in 2013, the allocations to be done in eight months.
Everyone understands the motion? One more time, Charlene.
To deny the $11,000 shortage for 2012, and beginning with the 2013 allocations, that they be done in eight months, per the request. The full dollar amount would be done out in eight months.
Okay. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
No.
Sasso.
No.
Pardon? Sasso?
No.
Nordstrom.
No.
Scott.
No.
Clayton.
No.
Peterson.
Aye.
Doyle.
No.
Lewis.
No.
Roberts.
No.
Wright.
No.
Motion fails. One to nine.
And the original motion is to deny?
To deny the request, yes.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May, may I make a, an amendment?
I'd rather you didn't, but you can. No, go ahead, Richie.
Well, it was your idea, so.
Go ahead.
That we go ahead with. That we go ahead with the deny, but, but my amendment is to have the negotiation session between the Chamber and the Mayor's Office to continue with an MOU. That's my amendment.
All right. We'll handle that as a substitute, a substitute motion, cleaner. We have a substitute motion by Richie to proceed with the denial of the dispersment, but ask, ask for the Mayor's Office to proceed, or the city to proceed with negotiations with the Chamber on an MOU. And now, you're not, you're not, you're not keeping us, though, from discussing that in the MOU. That could be discussed as part of the MOU?
Yep.
That's your intent?
Yes, my dear.
Okay. Everyone understands Richie's substitute motion? We have a second by Bonnie Peterson. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. I don't think it carries, but we'll do a roll call.
Clayton?
No.
Peterson?
Aye.
Doyle?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Roberts?
No.
Wright? Laurenti?
No.
Sasso?
No.
Nordstrom?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Three to seven this time, but it still fails.
Okay, we are back down to the original motion, which is, which is to, to deny. All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Doyle?
Aye.
Lewis?
No.
Roberts?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Laurenti?
Aye.
Sasso?
Yeah.
Nordstrom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Clayton?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to three.
Okay. Motion carries. Item number 57. Jerry, can you read this in the record for us?
Yes, sir. Number 57 is PW 081412-16, is a request for waived disposal fees for the renovation of the VT McGillicuddy House located at 727 South Street, petitioners Historic Rapid City, and came out of Public Works on the 3 to 2 for denial. I yield the floor.
We have a motion by Doyle, and a second by Roberts, to deny the request for waiver of disposal fees. Any discussion? Any discussion? Bonnie Peterson.
I'm not gonna say what I want to say, because I need to recuse myself on the vote. Thank you.
Okay. Ron Sasso?
I just, I was one of the people who voted in favor of the request, and the main reason for that, I think, this will be an asset for the city, the McGillicuddy House, and then the, I think it is, given that is an asset for the city, it falls into a unique category as a nonprofit request, so, with historic preservation. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is to deny. We'll go to Charity.
Just a quick comment. It's already in the, the report, that we do have a nonprofit rate as well, which is what we would honor with this denial. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Terry Waltersdorf, do you know the difference between the nonprofit and the regular rate? Do you happen to know that off the top of your head? Or Jerry? Either one of you guys?
We have, I don't think we have a nonprofit rate.
There is no difference in the rate between nonprofit and, and regular rate. We have a, we have a different rate for our, the resale store, but, other than that, there's no difference in disposal fee.
How many dollars are we, are we talking in, in fees?
This particular request, we're estimating a little under $600. I, I think from a staff standpoint, I'm concerned that it will, it'll be followed up by additional requests from, from other very worthwhile organizations, doing very worthwhile projects in the city.
You know, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember when there's been other requests, but there has been. And Jerry, do you remember, do you remember when there's been?
I don't know, the Feigl House was one. We have done them in the past, when you go back 25 years ago, over the period, we did, but that's one reason we established at that time a $10 ton for nonprofits, so there was some payment by them, but not punitive. We were that way, and that's gone away, so, you're back to thinking, for rate, or waive it.
Okay. We'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was one of them on the other side of Ron on this at the Public Works meeting, and the reason being is precedent, again. I mean, we were talking about precedent earlier. We have a lot of worthwhile groups in Rapid City, but if they all decided at one time, I'll give you an example, Neighbor Works, you know, they've tore down four, five, six houses, whatever it is up in North Rapid so far, rebuilt new houses. Every one of those, they can come forward with us and ask us to waive this. You know, there's a lot of groups in Rapid City that do wonderful things for the city, but do we want, if we do this, do we want every group in Rapid City coming forward and asking for, for this? I mean, it, it is a setting precedent thing. The, the staff recommended that we deny it. This is a worthwhile group, this is a wonderful project, I don't deny that. Is the $600 that the city's gonna give them worth the possible headaches in the future? I don't think so. Hopefully, us debating this here on the council will bring in that much more extra money to them, and they can pay for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, John, and we'll go to Steve Laurenti. Steve?
And I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, thank you, by the way, first, but John's remarks, because anybody, I think, who was on the Legal and Finance Committee a few months ago, we had the yellow bike program come before us, and they were looking for an exception on the ban shell, I think, and I think it's important that we stay consistent on that. I mean, yellow bike program is very important and vital, and they do a great job for our community, but at the same time, they were looking for a waiver of the fee for the ban shell, I think, and we were debating whether we had control of it, or the Civic Center. But anyway, we didn't make that exception for them. I think we need to, I would recommend that we follow suit, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we'll go to Jerry.
Failed to mention, yes, we had these type of requests, but I never remember being overrun by them, or being abused by them. I just think it was a good way that we could help out with some common sense and some participation by the city, so, it wasn't a runaway abusive program when we did have it, so...
So, no further discussion? The motion is to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
That way they heard me.
I heard a couple.
Doyle?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Wright?
No.
Laurenti?
Aye.
Sasso?
No.
Nordstrom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Clayton?
Aye.
Peterson?
Richie.
It would be a, one, two, three, 72 to 1 vote. 721.
Okay. All right, we will...
Item 58.
58. Go ahead.
Item 58, PW 073112-32, deny the request for an exception to allow an existing approach on Fifth Street to be utilized for ingress and egress to a commercial parcel, Lot 5 of North 80 subdivision, Section 19 Township 1 North, Range 8 East, Black Hills Meridian, Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota. More generally described as being located on the east side of Fifth Street, between Stumer Road and Catron Boulevard, and I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded, and we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Wow, that kind of came around quick. Question for Janelle, if I may. My heart really goes out to you, sitting out there, it's one of the reasons I left engineering, which is really kind of ironic, I know. Quick question for you. The access off of Fifth Street, will people be able to, I had a side conversation going on, so I missed, I think you might have said it during your presentation, but will people be able to pull in there and go to Arby's, for instance, or do they have to access off of East Stumer?
This is the proposed entrance here, and this is what we're showing as a through connection to Bentley. There's the possibility that there would be a connection through this portion of Arby's that they might utilize as cross-use agreements, some not like they do at Rushmore Crossing, where you can move from Target to Shields, but it's not a street, but it allows circulation between those businesses, and it would still allow people to exit out onto Bentley Boulevard, and, I guess, patronize these other lots as they develop.
Okay.
So, there's, it's not precluded at this time. I guess we didn't envision that you would not be able to circulate in any fashion, but we had intended that it would be very limited circulation between Bentley Boulevard and here, so that the site would be designed so that it does not represent a street, it's more a parking lot.
Okay. Thankfully, one, I think you answered my, my question during your presentation, and I'll tell you, and Dale, don't get mad, but my concerns for this site were quite different than staff's concerns, and it was the westbound traffic, or any really traffic feeding onto and heading north on Fifth Street, having to slow down as people are trying to get into the turning lane for Walmart, and then wanting to access the site. So, the, the one question I had that would totally change that conversation is what's going to go there? What kind of trip generation are we looking at? And a medical facility actually scores you guys some serious points on this issue with me. So, the number of people, in my experience, are gonna be accessing this site a day, and potentially, you know, wreaking havoc in that area, are few, very few. So, I, I think this has been well thought out, and, on the rare exception, I'm not going to concur with staff on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm still looking for a motion.
Dale, if you could, I'd love to hear what the, the staff, I, I give you guys a lot of leeway on this, and so I'm, I'm really reluctant to, to vote for something that staff has studied, spent a lot of time on and studied, so I'd like to hear what staff is, because I'm still kind of up in the air on this, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Laurenti. I guess I'd like to give a, kind of a brief history of how we got where we are here today, What you see is a plat of Lot 5, which I believe is the lot that Mr. Bentley has purchased. Arby's is located on the lot. As you can see on the left side of the exhibit there, this plat actually came from the original exception request. The planning commission recommendation to the city council, which was ultimately approved on February 6th of this year, was that, "The plat document shall be revised to show proposed non-access easement extending along the entire length of Fifth Street. As it abuts the property, or an exception shall be obtained to allow access from a higher-order street. If an exception is not obtained, the existing curb cut shall be removed. If an exception is obtained, the length of area without a non-access easement shall be limited to only accommodate one lane of one-way traffic." So, the previous owner of this property, as part of the plat, recognized that that is a one-way and only, and as you can see from the exhibit that they submitted for the exception, there's every indication that this was always meant to be a right-in-only for this access. As such, staff did approve the exception request, I believe, February 3rd of this year, to allow right-in. Janelle has done a wonderful job of presenting standards and guidelines, ASHTO, but ultimately, ASHTO is not our, our ordinance, or our access management tool that we have to live by. What we have to live by is our infrastructure design criteria manual, and Nicole Leacy of my office did a fine job of, of explaining that in the request for exception, one of the reasons that we're, actually, the primary reason that we're recommending denial of this is, "No access approach shall be located so as to create a hazard, or as to invite unsafe vehicular movements." I believe the staff has done a good job of, of making a compromise, of providing access to this lot, and trying to minimize unsafe vehicular movements. On that note, you know, certainly the new owner has every right to come before this council to request a variance or an exception to what was already approved.
Dale, and if you would, can you go back to the map, please?
Certainly.
And I don't know if you can point to it, but can you, just for myself and maybe some of the other council members, but at least for me, can you point to where we're looking at, and explain some of these, these, give us a scenario of these unsafe traffic patterns that you're speaking about, and give us some detail as you're, you know, give us some idea on orientation here, what we're talking about, if you would, please.
Certainly. As Janelle's described, there is a median that runs down the center of Fifth Street. There's a left turn lane located northbound on Fifth Street to Stumer Road. There's also two through lanes heading north. As vehicles are either coming this direction or this direction, they're going to be crossing over from one lane to the other to get either to the turn lane, or to the right to get on Stumer Road. They're gonna, there's a possibility that the traffic is either gonna go north, go west on Stumer, or go east on Stumer. So, there'll be conflicting vehicular movements, crossing, and then if you introduce another traffic flow into this area, where there may be crossing traffic, and this vehicle wants to get over and go west on Stumer, you've, you've added another weave to that whole situation there. Today, it probably doesn't look bad, but we need to look to the future. All the property to the south of Catron is proposed to be commercial development. There's been a request from the property owner there to extend an arterial road to allow more commercial development. We need to look out 30 years to know that this is not a very favorable condition to have, and we have one opportunity, I think, today to, to take action on it.
Thank you, Dale, very much. I appreciate that. I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I have a question for Janelle, please. Janelle, is there, are you aware of any restrictions recorded anywhere on the plat, or anything at the county on this access?
No, I am not. Oops. Excuse me. This is the actual plat document itself that was recorded at the Register of Deeds, and it indicates the access restriction here, non-access easement with the 30-foot wide that was allowed, or permitted by the plat. If you were one single lane, why would you have 30-foot of open space on a 26-foot wide approach? So, there was no constructive notice by this document, and there was nothing recorded covenant-wise, or anything that offered constructive notice for future landowners, that there was that intended restriction.
Thank you. I guess I'm just, I know we're gonna hear an argument pretty soon here, that this is a safety issue, and I appreciate the staff's work on this, and others doing their job. I just, well, I spoke earlier about not wanting to have any more government regulations in my life than I can help, and this is one of them. I think, you know, we're trying to make it a completely safe world out there, and I understand, like I said, I appreciate what people are trying to do, but we might as well wear helmets up here, because we might fall down and hit our heads. I mean, this is, you know, you can't control the world, you can't make it completely safe. Bottom lines, we're making this property really hard to use for the home, the, excuse me, the property owner, they're willing to spend millions of dollars in our community, develop, you know, property tax, we obviously need, create jobs. I, but I just don't, economically, I don't like it, and from a land ownership rights, I don't like it either, so, I will be voting... I don't like it either, so I will be voting in support of my own motion. Thank you.
Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Janelle, while you're there, in your exhibits that you showed us at Public Works, there was one, and it was one with words on it, it was your last exhibit, started with the word "ideally."
Yes.
Could you put that up, please? So, as everybody can see, and perhaps everybody's seen this, I know we did it at Public Works, ideally, driveways should not be located within the functional area of an intersection as described above and shown in Figure 9-1, which takes you back to other places, and that's the situation we have here. So, am I wrong? If I'm wrong, correct me, please, Janelle.
No, the sentence does read that way, but it also says, as you move along further, it talks about elements that you consider in the intersection design, and it provides a list of things. It talks about the ability of drivers to make decisions. Visibility in this issue is very clear. There's a stoplight that regulates the traffic that comes forward from Catron. It talks about physical elements, different things like that character and use of the abutting property. The next page goes on to talk about geometric design features, which is the raised curb median that separates half that traffic, so you're only dealing with northbound traffic. You have no interference or influence from anything on the west side of Fifth Street. And it also says that you consider economic factors, where the effects of controlling or limiting rights of way on abutting residential or commercial properties. So, while it says "ideally," it also provides this comprehensive list of things that you need to consider or should consider when you make this decision.
All right, and where I was going, thank you, is that we're here to make a decision, yea or nay? And where that leads in with that word "ideally" is we have a choice, where we choose the ideal situation or less-than-ideal. And I think staff has made some salient arguments in terms of what we will and won't see. Dale, if I may ask you a couple of questions, please? And if you don't mind, could you put up the map, and forgive me if it's Janelle's paperwork, but there's one that shows the proposal for that particular piece of property?
Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes, thank you. Now, Dale, we've heard you speak, and you're a traffic engineer as well. I've lived here for 20-plus years, and I've got to say that we still have that small-town mentality when we get behind the wheel. Turn signals are something that are seldom used, and people can usually be counted on to not always do the right thing. And what I see here is a potential, now, we heard tonight that there's a potential customer for this property, urgent care, but when I, when I look at the parking lot around that building, and I would assume that the front of that building would be that north, kind of a northwest-facing area, then traffic would ingress, and there's a potential for a shortcut, if you will, to Bentley Lane. And now, if we allow exit out that way, then we're inviting people to use it as two-way traffic through a parking lot. And I think the potential for the parking lot, I'm not an expert, certainly, but I think the potential for parking lot accidents is there in addition to what you've pointed out in terms of people staging and weaving and all those other things that go on with multiple lines of traffic movement. Can you address some of those things? I'm sorry, I kind of rambled.
I guess I'll keep it simple. I concur with what you're saying, that based on the site plan that they have submitted here, anyone from any direction can utilize that approach to access Fifth Street. There's no restrictions, there's nothing in this site plan, anyway, that would indicate that, you know, all the other lots would not be able to use that.
Right, so we see a potential for, excuse me, ingress and exit all over the place with a parking lot basically being used as a thoroughfare?
I guess I would comment maybe in another manner. Janelle had indicated that they had originally brought forward a proposal to actually connect a street out to Fifth Street. In my opinion, this is going to function just that same way, that you're going to get a number of people taking a shortcut, if you will, or a more direct route to Fifth Street from all those other interior lots. I think that potential is certainly there, and you could probably count on it.
Thank you. Ron Sasso. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple, couple things looking at this. One, again, we only are talking about the differences, the egress from that, that area. City staff has indicated being able, you know, that they would be able to go in through there, but not egress and run into the traffic issues. We have one chance to get this right. I know when we, you know, hear that, okay, it could be a medical clinic, well, that might fall through, and it could be something else. And 20 years from now, it could be something else. We have one shot at this, and looking at what we have here, and you look around the city, and there are a lot of examples of where we did, it wasn't done the right way 30 years ago. And having it with just the ingress and not the egress makes sense. It will be safer, it will be easier, there'll be less traffic, and moving towards the future, when you look 20 years from now, we won't be running into problems and saying, gee, yeah, this is one of those areas that we keep having accidents, you know, and that then we're having to try and figure out, how do we fix that? And I, and I have to say, I commend city staff, you know, the staff for their work on this, and I think they've been very passionate in their work, and to me, that says a lot, that this is important. There aren't a lot of opportunities to do something moving forward and get it right once. Thank you.
We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Janelle, just a couple of questions for you, if I may. If I'm looking at this current map correctly, if we allowed just ingress only, we would have to make a through street all the way over to Bentley Lane so that people could have egress from that medical facility?
They would have to circulate through the parking lot to get to Bentley Lane.
Then if we allow the egress, ingress and egress?
Correct.
The chances of them going through to get through that through street, hypothetical through street there, that would not occur, meaning that chances are they would go in and leave by that ingress/egress spot.
I can't guarantee that no one would ever use that going through there, but if you design it appropriately, and it has the appearance of a parking lot, and it's utilized that way, I don't, I don't personally envision that you're going to have this flood of traffic. You're going to have other businesses that develop along here, you're going to have other goods and services that people want to shop at, and you're also going to have a light up here on Stumer Road. So, if you have heavy traffic, if this develops in the future where, you know, there's much more traffic than we anticipate now, people gravitate towards the easiest way to get out. I mean, if you know that you're, you're going to have difficulty getting out somewhere, you're going to gravitate towards the light, and I think it discounts the other uses that are going to be taking place here. So, I don't see this as becoming a thoroughfare.
One more question on the ingress/egress point. We have a name for that right now? I heard a rumor that we had a, a name for that curb cut.
I'm not sure what you're referring to. I don't think we have a...
Ignore the question. Could you tell me approximate distance, on the northwest-facing side of this building, you have those parking stalls, and then right across there is some more parking stalls facing Arby's?
Right.
Approximately the distance between those two lines?
The driving aisle is a 26-foot-wide driving aisle. It's a standard parking lot aisle.
And then if, just want to reiterate, the east side of this urgent care facility, if it is designed so, that would be an inhibit for a through street there, that could be added into a later design?
It could be. There could be additional controls. One of the things I should point out is that all of this property is within a planned development, so any specific site that comes forward goes to staff, goes to community planning for their input, and goes to planning commission as well. There could be other features that could be designed into that to help discourage use.
I'd sure appreciate it if you could really strongly consider those, because I, my discomfort level with, is, right now, is if this is an ingress only, it'll make it a through street if we don't have the egress. That's my discomfort level. So, if you can make sure that accessibility coming in from the east side on Bentley Lane is inhibited, I could be more comfortable with that.
I have every confidence that if this is approved, that staff will do their best job to ensure that that doesn't become a through street, and to make sure that the site is designed or other items are implemented to help prevent that.
I concur. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
We'll go to Jerry Wright.
I support an egress and ingress off Fifth Street on the condition that those two connectors, one to Bentley and one to the Stumer Road by Arby's, are gone. Otherwise, I think you are setting up a through street, and you're setting up some serious safety problems. I support egress and ingress off Fifth into that lot, but you take those two connectors out. Can you do that? Will you do that? Time to deal. Think about it. Let's... Go down and come back.
Dale?
Just so you realize that if that is the requirement, then the only way to get to this site is from the south. Northbound traffic, or southbound, excuse me, northbound traffic would only be able to exit the site and leave the site. You couldn't get in there from southbound if you were just to have access on Fifth Street without having to do some sort of turnaround the end of the island or go south and turn around. Certainly doesn't help my case that I'm presenting to you, but that would be the condition that you're up against.
My concern would also be that, you know, possibly from the standpoint of fire protection and things like that, it's better to have an alternate access out than to have only just one approach. And it does, I think, severely limit the economic viability of that lot to have just the ability to enter and exit in one direction only. That's a pretty difficult pill to swallow for a commercial property.
Well, my understanding was they wanted egress and ingress from Fifth Street.
Correct.
This complicates it, in my opinion.
And...
And it's something that doesn't sit right with you, I'm just going to tell you that. I have no problem in and out, but it's not, I don't think we have a resolution yet.
You know, and I guess we don't see the circulation any different than, like, connects in Family Thrift Center, where those parking lots are actually connected together, and do people drive back and forth?
There's problems there, though, Janelle.
Between one building and the other.
We're trying to minimize those problems. There are pedestrian risks there, and I'm not trying to create problems. I like to help get this done, but I think there's some issues that need some more thought and address. You've got actually three, two points coming in from the east side, one from the north, one from the east.
There's a potential connection from the north.
Multiple access points into a office parking lot, which is going to end up being a through street.
And I don't see the connectivity as a street.
It's different than access, you know, I'm, okay.
I apologize, but the same way at Rushmore Crossing, the interconnectability of those parking lots, I don't visualize those. Those are not a public street. They're, they're a way to, you know, essentially move between businesses.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I have some comments to make, that this Catron in Fifth Street is going to be our new La Crosse, our east-north street. It doesn't take much imagination, when you see all these plot lands subdivided up here, that businesses are going to come in, traffic's going to come in, it's going to turn that whole access into a street. I mean, you can look at now, but it doesn't take much imagination, because we want, we already have a Verizon over there, a healthy pause in another section. Walmart's there, we know what happened, La Crosse, with Walmart coming in. The same thing is going to happen. And I have to kind of get a chuckle out of this, because while ago, my colleagues were so concerned that our bookkeeper, our accountant, our finance officer with her computer would have to spend extra time putting in eight payments instead of 12. Well, where do you think the police are going to be in the fire department when we increase the likelihood of accidents in that location? Our bookkeeper, our finance officer, I don't want to, you know, our people keeping track of things, they're in the safety of their office in front of a computer, and these are real people, and as a nurse, and I know I'm biased because of my experience as a nurse, that small accidents can maim people for life. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that people are going to go the fast, easiest way that they can, so they're going to turn it into a street. Also, when people can turn right on red, as they approach that intersection, they're going to be looking to get over to the left lane, so they can go up there to be in the left lane. They're not even going to notice that people come in and are out of there. So, I can support letting go an in, as long as it's built so that's really an in, and not just a pretend in. I can do that. Also, a colleague made a comment about how much money people are spending to develop this. And I realize, and I support business, our whole city needs business for the sales tax and property tax, and I applaud people that put their savings and money at risk to make things better for our community. But to say that the person with the most money wins, and the women and children and the men driving down that path, we don't mind that their safety is compromised? I mean, our number-one rule of council is to provide safety for our citizens. And if you can't envision this looking like La Crosse, and you're letting someone right turn right there and have all this traffic going in, or people rush, running the, you know, the yellow light to turn, right in there is going to increase a lot of traffic and a lot of safety risk. So, I, pro-business, I want the business to develop. We can say that there's urgent care there now, but perhaps it'll be something busier. And Richie, it doesn't really matter, in my mind, egress or egress, because, I mean, that's going to be a street. You can just look at the line. If you're going to let people come back, you know, out of it, it's just going to turn into a runway through there. And I worked in the Aspen Center, and a lot of times through that parking lot, people would probably go about 50 or 60 miles per hour trying to get to a, out of there. So, anyway, I'm all about the safety, and I urge my colleagues to think about this very seriously. This is the new La Crosse, new east-north street, and we don't want to look back and be counting that as one of the biggest places where we have accidents, where we're going to be sending our police off... to be sending our police officers, our ambulance drivers, et cetera. So I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Bonnie, we'll go to our Public Works Director, Terry Walters-Dorf. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't take up too much more of your time, just a couple real quick comments, and some of you have alluded to it already. One on the traffic generator, you know, obviously, we look 20, 30 years down the road and we are pretty sure there's probably no guarantee that it will continue to be a low-traffic-generating use there in the future. Number two, keep in mind, and it's been mentioned before, that the southbound traffic on Fifth Street will need to access off of Stumer Road and Bentley Lane, so they're going to have to create easy access into this particular lot off of Bentley Lane, which I think will, again, make it more enticing for users, because it needs to be easy access into this lot to utilize it as a thoroughfare through. And number three, and probably more importantly, and I want to commend Dale and his staff for their review on this, but I want to remind you guys, they don't work in a vacuum here in the engineering, in the engineering office. They deal in the real world of having to deal with management access issues that, that are conflicts in different areas when we're doing reconstruction project. And you can guess that 30, 40 years from now, when we come in to reconstruct this, there's a good possibility we will have, we're dealing with access issues if we have to, you know, nothing worse than approaching a business owner and saying, "We need to remove your access or limit your access because we are seeing too many conflicts here." It's, puts us in a tough position, and I just wanted to remind you that's part of the prism we, we look through when we review these types of things.
We'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity? Chad's spoken twice. Chad's spoken twice. I'm sorry. Chad Lewis.
I guess it is ladies first. I'd like to make an amendment to my motion that we make, we approve it with a stipulation that the traffic calming is put into it, some other factor, maybe speed bumps or something like that to slow down the chance of being a thoroughfare through there, but that would be okay with the, the person making the, the applicant? Would that be applicant? Okay. All right, thank you. With that in mind, then I'll yield the floor.
The motion maker has amended his, his motion to approve with traffic calming.
Sir?
And that's okay with the seconder?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Technically, it's me.
Charity, go ahead.
Call the question.
Okay, question's been called. Any objections to calling the question? We do have an objection, so do we have a second to Charity's motion to call the question?
Okay.
Okay, we have a second by Roberts. We're going to proceed on the motion to end debate. A yes is to end debate and a no is to keep debating. All in favor of ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Laurenti?
Aye.
Sasso?
No.
Nordstrom?
No.
Scott?
No.
Clayton?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Doyle?
Aye.
Pardon? Are you an aye?
I'm an aye.
Okay. It's a tie.
Chair votes aye. We'll now proceed to the vote. Everyone understands the motion?
No, please.
Charlene, could you please read back the motion for us?
Motion as amended is to approve with stipulations that there be an addition of traffic calming measures.
Okay. Tr...
About the motion.
Clarification only, no debate. Okay, go ahead.
Are you suggesting that the traffic calming go on Fifth Street, or...
In the parking lot, as I understand it. And that's, is that the intent of the motion maker? Okay, it's in the parking lot. Okay, everyone understands the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Laurenti?
No.
Sasso?
No.
Nordstrom?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Clayton?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Doyle?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
It's a 5-5 tie.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Bids. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 59 is the railroad crossing rehab. The recommendation is to award the total bid plus alternate one in the amount of $183,212.75 to Stanley J. Johnson Concrete Contractor, Inc.
Motion by Wright, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 60.
Item number 60, South Valley Drive Extension. The recommendation is to award the base bid plus alternate one in the amount of $365,605.91 to Rapid Construction Company, LLC.
Motion by Richie, second by Charity. For approval, any discussion? Before we vote on this, and I know the hour is late, so I'll keep my comments brief, but I want to take a moment to thank Richie and Steve, and of course, there's many others that were involved in this as well, but I'm very excited about finally having the secondary access completed for this, and I think it's very important for the community. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number 61 is the Enchantment Road Sanitary Sewer Extension. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $566,112.39 to Heavy Constructors, Inc.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have one item under Council reports, and that's a report on La Croix Links. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure some of you were wondering the significance of the shovel. You can use your imagination on that one. Actually, last Friday, we had a groundbreaking for a project going on at the Y La Croix Links Golf Course, and, you know, it's, it's pretty interesting. We were talking during the budget hearings about the water that the city pays or subsidizes for this particular course. It was kind of interesting to see the other side of the story. Back in '02, the city subsidy to this course was $166,000 per year, and the course was in terrible shape. Once the Y took over, the subsidies reduced every year until now, all we, all we pay is this $30,000 in water. Anything over a certain amount, have that here somewhere, but it's not popping out at me, the, the Y actually takes care of. So one of the things that I just wanted to bring to awareness right now, they're putting $355,000 into this course to upgrade the irrigation, to totally change the drainage patterns, because we have a lot of really dry areas and a lot of saturated areas within this course, and this is all coming from private donations. I think the Parks and Rec Fund is putting in $25,000, but everything else has been raised privately. So I just, you know, wanted to put that out there. If anyone's interested in this information, please let me know. And I guess the question I would leave you with is who's subsidizing who? Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. Do we have a motion to acknowledge?
Remove.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Scott, to acknowledge. We do have two lights, is it on this item? Jerry and Chad?
No.
Okay, all in favor to acknowledge, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items 62 through 74. Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. A public hearing remains open. We do not have any speaker request forms at this time. Let's go ahead and do we have a, does anybody want to remove any of the items from 62 to 74 for separate consideration?
62 needs to be removed.
Okay, 62 will be removed. Can we have a motion to approve the balance per designation on the agenda?
Remove.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Lewis and a second by Doyle to approve 63 through 74 per, through 73. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 62, can we have a motion to continue to September 4?
Remove.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 73, or 74. Amanda, can you read this for us?
Second reading, ordinance 5856, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Kathy J. Cook, living trust for a rezoning from general agricultural district to park-forest district for property generally described as being located at 3500 Tower Road, and I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott, second by Doyle, to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list, Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no changes to the bill list, so the total is $7,906,030.85.
Motion by Peterson, second by Doyle, to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
We have a motion by Clayton and a second by everyone else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.